Fairfield Board of Education is called to order. Present, we have Ms. Rotelli, Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Guernsey, Mrs. Gerber, myself, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Cummings, Mr. Asa, Mr. Peterson, and Ms. Kelly. Ask you to all please rise for the pledge. Okay, for the public, the purpose of this meeting, this is the first of two Board of Education budget workshops. We'll be meeting today and again next Tuesday, and we are set to adopt the Board of Education budget next Thursday. The board has spent the last week reviewing questions, submitting them to staff. We've gotten some answers back, but tonight is the night that we begin our deep dive into the budget. Before we start reviewing by section, Mr. Cummings, I don't know if you have any introductory remarks you would like to give, or if we should just get down to business.
Thank you, Ms. Vitale, and good evening, everyone. I do have just a couple of opening remarks. I want to first thank the board for the questions they submitted. We worked on those over the weekend and today, individually and collectively, to bring forward the answers. As you'll see, there's a few questions that we were not able to get the answers to, particularly around areas around, I think if I was to group those, they're roughly areas around some staffing FTE-type issues, and we'll be working on those and have those answers ready for you next week. And if we can get them to you for the Friday packet, we will do that as well. I also want to thank the executive directors, who spent a lot of time this weekend and today compiling the answers. And we're going to try to go through the budget using the agenda today, that's our intent. We'll use the questions in the document. I know that the board only got this document, I think about quarter after five today, through email, and has only just seen the paper copy. So if there's questions that the board asked in that document, but want to ask publicly as we're going through, because I know you've not had much of a chance to look at it, we'll do that now. I thought I would begin really going back to the heart of the presentation I gave last week on the budget itself, and just go through the enhancement slides to see if there's any specific questions. And as I do, I'm not going to review the data or the information I already shared with you, but I know there's some questions that came up around these enhancements, and I can address those specifically. We also have with us tonight, well, later on when we get to tuition, Mr. Mancusi has put together a short PowerPoint to discuss the PPT process and how outplacement's work. So we're going to do, we'll introduce the tuition section with that presentation. And we also asked some of our staff members to be here tonight to speak specifically to some of the budget proposals that we have, including our middle school administrators, who can speak to questions around the SRBI coordinator position, the schedule, the intent of the additional FTE. And when it's time for the executive directors to join us, I'm going to ask them all to come up and sit together at the couple of tables so that we don't, we can save some time on the back and forth. So with that said, why don't I jump into the slides real quickly? Again, you've seen these, but it may be an opportunity for me, I think it's an opportunity for me to address some of the questions that have come up.
And just let the record show, Mrs. Max and Cannelly has joined us.
All right, so our first enhancement slide was the middle school schedule. One of the questions that we did receive was, and tied to this proposal is an increase in staffing request for 4.6 staff, two math and resource teachers, two language arts specialists, one math, one ELA, or language arts specialist, excuse me, for Fairfield Woods, and the other for Roger Lolo. Tomlinson has those positions now. We also suspect, as we've done some schedule iterations, that we're going to need another 0.6 FTE to cover world language, PE, and/or music. So how that plays out is still to be determined. One of the questions we did receive was, would we still put the proposal forward and adopt this schedule if the FTE was not funded? And our answer would be yes. We feel that for quite a long time, the needs of this schedule, the needs of our students in the middle school are going to be met by a schedule that allows for the longer instructional period, a greater ability during that time for our teachers and staff to get to know the students academically, as well as get to know them as people, and be able to better support them in their learning. So we feel that that is the right thing to do. We are asking the board, in order for this to be as successful adventure as we believe it can be, we do believe that there is staff, and one of the questions gets into the numbers for you, excuse me, one of the responses gets into the numbers for you, that there is a need among our students at those two schools for additional intervention help. Not only in the number of students that need help, but in the type of help we can give them. As you are likely aware, the current middle school schedule has a reading class, for example. It is a, Mr. Peterson? I don't know if you had a question.
I didn't have a question. I just want to clarify, should the board not appropriate these funds in the current budget, you're going to proceed anyway, but without the 4.6 staff?
We want to make this schedule work for our kids, yes.
Are you going to do it without the 4.6 staff?
Well, we will find, we will have to do it without the 4.0, and then seeing the schedule iteration, we're going to have to see how we might be, have to reallocate within staffing for the 0.6.
Within the staffing bucket?
Yes.
Not taking from other buckets?
No, that's right.
You are aware of Board Policy 3170 that says transfers of more than $10,000 between buckets require board approval?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So one of the questions about that intervention support was that, as I said, the reading program runs currently as a scheduled class throughout the year. Not all students need that level of reading intervention at middle school, and by supporting the budget, supporting these positions within the budget, we'll be able to provide better support for students, or more support for students who have short-term reading needs, more specific to perhaps specific units they're addressing, wherever they might have that support or need that support, we'll be able to do more with that staffing. There were some questions about the middle school math textbooks, excuse me, the middle school and high school math textbooks, and we've broken out for you in one of our responses, Dr. Zavichin's had put it together, how those textbooks, if the board so chooses, could divide that purchase up either over a couple of years, but one of the questions was for us to prioritize those textbooks, and we've done that in one of the responses. Early literacy academy, there were some other questions about this related specifically to, I think it was staffing, and we have responses in the document to that, and as well as Mr. Mancusi has given you supporting documentation best, based on last week's presentation, with some of the more larger picture on the financial piece that was asked for. Again, the world language, and as I just will say this, I don't think we got a question on this, but I do want to reiterate this. We said last week that while we're asking for a 1.0 teacher for the American Sign Language class, that FTE request will be modified based on student enrollment, both in this new course, but also how it might impact current enrollment in the existing world language choices. There are questions around the middle school stipend. We did supply in the answers, there's a link to the, or maybe with you, I apologize, the job description for the middle schools SRBI coordinators. There's a couple of responses, specific board member questions around the stipend position, or excuse me, the SRBI positions. And again, our middle school administrators are here today, they can speak much more eloquently and directly about this position than I can. We also have a response to the, both the SLP leadership position, as well as the world language stipend position at the middle schools. I did give you tonight the proposed job description for the family and community liaison position. Again, that is in draft form. We've had staff look at it, but that may be modified as we go forward, and I also give it to you as a draft for your input and consideration. And there's also a question that talks about the staffing, the switch from the grant funding, the ARPESR grant funding, to the general funds for the .3 position, the DEI administrator bringing it back onto the general funds. The part-time, we had a question about this, there was a couple of questions. One was, what would happen if we don't fill it? We would modify the salary? The answer would be no, it's budgeted $20,000, that's what we're looking to do. It is considered a part-time position, how that's going to be defined may well depend on the person we find for the position. Somebody also asked if we would limit this role to school hours, and I think that in some grades, that has, to some degree, that has an advantage, but on the other hand, we can certainly work with the appropriate interested applicant, because they have a greater ability to move about the school and look into closets and things while the rooms are unoccupied and things are quieter. And we suspect a lot of this work would also perhaps take place over the summer. There were, there's a couple of questions, I think there was one or two questions around this position, or the cybersecurity work, but relatively little, and again, if any questions come up tonight, we're happy to answer those questions tonight. Ms. Burns is here. She can also answer questions about the technology and infrastructure that we're looking for in that area, which is related to this slide. A lot of these questions, there was a couple of questions about the HVAC position. Mr. Papa George looked into that. There was a question around, would this position possibly be shared with the town? We spoke with the town, and they do not feel it is. The people who currently work for the town are already stretched beyond their ability to get the job, though, and they have two employees. But we also, we got some questions on major maintenance, we can address those, but if the board wishes, I know that's the topic for next Tuesday, we can also discuss them then. Yeah?
Considering that the town figure that they were stretched thin as it was, if it becomes a budget issue, is this something that you think the town would be interested in splitting .5 and .5, helping to address, for both parties to address more needs in that way?
We haven't had that conversation with anybody that would be able, capable of making that decision. I think, my general caution when these, and you've heard me say this before, my general caution when those types of shared services are designed is that it's real, it's, school systems tend to be on the losing end of those usually, so the school system has to, there's a whole other level of safeguarding your investment. So that's just a quick review of the enhancement slides, and if there's any questions specifically, or Ms. Vitale, if you want, we can then get into the actual agenda items.
Could I trouble you to go back to slide one, and we can just go through it really quickly and just do questions?
They show tonight?
Tonight.
Okay, that's like, okay. Yeah, I hear you. I think we missed one. Yeah, is that it? Oh, there it is, okay. Sorry about that.
Any questions on, Ms. Guernsey?
So I, I've been thinking a lot about this, and I have a lot of questions about how the block schedule works, and I'm torn, because I want to have a general understanding of it, but also knowing that you want to move forward regardless, I mean, kind of questioning how much I ask here, but I'm going to go back to a question that I tried to ask the last time, and it is, how will students that are not receiving intervention services benefit from this new schedule during the what I need period? What is the benefit to them if they are not moving forward with the curriculum?
I don't know, I can attempt to answer that, but I don't know if one of our administrators or Dr. Parrish wants to speak to that piece?
Executive Director of Operations and Processes, Zakiya Parrish. So during the win period, that's a time for students that are not necessarily being pulled for intervention to have a chance to go deeper into some of the material. There may be opportunities to stretch them in terms of the things that they're learning, but there also may be things that they may need additional support in, that are not necessarily directly related to an intervention, but they just need additional assistance. So it really will vary depending on the student and the content area. We mentioned at that time that there will also be opportunities for students who are being pulled out for lessons, that might be another opportunity for them to be able to have that, that time with that music lesson. But also our students that receives special services through special education, they will receive those related services during that time as well. I don't know if others have.
I would only add that it also gives deeper time for students to perhaps dive into areas of their own interest within that area of the curriculum. So depending on how the teacher sets it up, the student may be able to discover a passion within that particular subject area.
And I would only add that, as the principals have discussed, the professional learning that is going to support the teachers as we move into this new block, that is one of the focus areas of the work they want to do with them, is how to, excuse me, how to prepare the lessons and vary the instruction for the students.
So if the students then are, some of the students are taking this deeper dive into subjects of interest, is there a concern then that the pacing of the curriculum will be problematic and they won't receive, I mean, there's a certain amount that you would need to cover, so in a limited amount of time, would they be able to cover the same amount of material?
I guess I don't understand, they're not covering new material during that time, so that wouldn't impact the coverage of the material? Are you referring to them going deeper into a specific topic that they've already covered with the entire class?
No, over the course of the year, there's a certain amount of material that would be required in each class. So if in fact they're not moving forward with instruction during these what I need periods, then how do we, how do we make sense of the lost time? That's what I'm trying to understand, how do we capture that? And will there be lost subject matter that's not taught? I mean, what's happening with that time period?
So part of the work our curriculum leaders are doing, or want to do this year, but also continuing on into next year, is looking at the curriculum, and it's really the implementation guides that have to be adjusted, not the curriculum itself. It's the implementation guides that teachers actually use to develop their lesson plans and things of that nature. So they're not modifying the curriculum, because that would have to then come back before the board, but looking at the actual implementation guides to figure out what adjustments have to be made based on the amount of time in the class.
Mrs. Gerber?
Thank you. I just have a question. I know that in the presentation we got in December, when you were talking about the going to visit the other schools that did the block schedule, and there were teachers and administrators who went on these tours, correct? Other than that, what type of role did teachers play in putting this all together? Just because I know that when, when the high school block schedule was rolled out, I know that there were, you know, a certain number of teachers who were involved, you know, in putting everything together, and I remember it was really helpful for those teachers, because I think, you know, obviously change is always something that people are a little nervous about, and with the high school block schedule, there was definitely that. And it was really helpful to have these teachers who really had bought into this whole thing and really believed in it, because they'd been part of the whole process. So I think it was really helpful, in some instances, to have teachers who had concerns, being able to turn to, you know, one of their colleagues and say, is this really something? And they could say, yeah, no, because they had kind of dived deeper into it in their work in helping to put it all together. Is that the case now? Because it just seems to me, and this is completely anecdotal, but there just seems to be a lot more concern from teachers and confusion about exactly how their jobs are going to change, and I realize that some of that certainly is due to the stress that they've been under for the past two years, and it's kind of like, now we're putting this on them as well. And I think that that is definitely something that concerns me, but I think it's also just, are they, are, is it just that we're just, and I get that a lot of times when people are happy with something, they might not necessarily speak out, but it just seems to me like there's much more concern and worry and frustration about this, and that a lot of teachers said that they didn't really know that this was coming down the pike, and so just how involved were teachers in this whole process?
So pre-pandemic, we had a, the core area of teachers that did those site visits. They were part of the core group that developed our guiding principles that you've seen in our presentation. We've never left those guiding principles. So along with that, in our, when we were looking at a past schedule with an 80-minute block or 88-minute block, we had brought a high school panel down to the, to the middle level, and those were high school teachers that once had been middle-level teachers. The feedback that we got from teachers was, this is too much, this is overwhelming, 88 minutes is too long. We also had similar feedback from some of our parent groups. We took that feedback, never leaving our guiding principles in moving forward through the pandemic, not our choice, obviously, in developing the schedule that's come together today. I don't know if my colleagues have anything to add to that.
And once we got a version that was ready, that we had run through IC to make sure that we had a proof of concept and it was going to work, then we put it in front of teachers, and then we got feedback again from teachers, and that's really where we are in the process. So now we're looking forward to do more professional development to get ready for the rollout for the block schedule.
I would only add that one of the questions that's come up around is timing, and as Mr. Fumato just mentioned, we were aiming, we had on the, in our agenda planning for the board, a presentation in December on this schedule, in anticipation of conversations in January around the budget. It took, coming back from the summer, it took a couple of months to run, do those schedule iterations, and to get ready for that board presentation. It's also very clear to us in our work that we took the teacher input all along, but what we always try to be conscious of is that of something is dramatic a change as a schedule is first presented to the Board of Education, and that we just try to keep that as a general principle in our work. So the teachers saw it just about the same time the board did, but that was a very deliberate sense, excuse me, a sense of timing to make sure that that happened that way.
I will share that we did share it with certain teacher groups prior to, so we vetted this through our curriculum leaders, which are inclusive of both our program directors who are administrators, but some of our other curriculum leaders who are also teachers. So they were the first, actually, I think the first, I believe the first pass was SRBI, the SRBI teams within the school, to again, figure out what it would look like, how it would impact students, you know, how it would work. The second iteration of that were our curriculum leaders, we took their feedback and input and made some additional adjustments. Then it was with the leadership teams within the schools, which are made up of the liaisons for each department, and then it was a full sharing with the staff, but that was right, again, in line with presenting to the board.
And I absolutely understand that. I mean, I know, having been on this board for a while, you know, someone's always going to be unhappy, well, why didn't I learn something sooner? And obviously, the board would have been said, well, the teacher's finding out, you know, I get that, absolutely, and I completely emphasize with that. I think my concern with this is that with the high school block, it was clear to me, because students weren't eating lunch, the periods weren't long enough, you know, they are high schools, they're that much older. I think my concern with this is that I still, and I apologize if I'm just being kind of obtuse about this, but I still don't really understand what this win period is going to be. I don't understand what diving deeper means, and it seems like it could end up being incredibly confusing and disjointed, because I would assume that in a classroom, you're going to have multitudes of different students with different ideas. I'm just not quite sure, it just seems like it would be really confusing for even the best of teachers, just because you have a large class, and there are a lot of different moving parts here, and so I just don't, I'm not sure I totally understand the benefit of it. While I love the idea of being able to dig deeper into things, and while I love the idea of students who need more supports getting those additional supports, I'm just having trouble envisioning how this is going to work, where it's not going to create more confusion and more frustration, and create more problems than it's going to solve. And I think that's, that's my biggest hesitancy with this, is I just don't see it, and maybe I'm just not, I don't know, and great, it just concerns me, so.
Can I just speak to that?
You can.
If you think about what our data that we share with the board shows, and specifically at the middle level, we have three areas of concern. We have an achievement level, we have an engagement concern, and related to that specifically is our concerns around the, in general, but since we're talking middle school, the social emotional health of our students. This win period allows, we have no place in our current schedule to really do that in a, in a content-focused way that would provide students an opportunity to both strengthen their learning and expand their learning, to make deeper connections to each other and to their teachers. We don't have anything like that in our middle school schedule. Our middle school schedule is, you know, 45 minutes or so of a rush through the day, repeated the next day, and through the week, and into the next week. It's a stressful environment for kids and for staff. And one of the things that the middle, the high school schedule change taught us was the advantages that came with slowing things down and giving teachers and students more time together to get deeper into their learning, because that's really what our curriculum has turned to focus on. Elementary schedules have always been supportive of that. The high school schedule change helped support that change. But our middle school schedule is still an anachronistic schedule driven by really a, a learning model that's focused on memorization and speed. And the schedule that is, that the teachers identified with the administrators of what needed to change was a schedule that saw those issues and provided more time, more time to connect, and more time to enrich and engage. So I will tell you, it will not be great at first, right? It won't. There's going to be a trial of learning with this. But the level of commitment from the administrators to support the teachers in this change, and I think once they're in that change, the engagement that the students will show will help drive the change forward. So that's a response to that question, Ms. Gerber.
Okay, Ms. Jacobson, and then I want to, I, we could spend this entire meeting talking about the middle school schedule change, so I want to try to keep our focus just budget impact, just for the other, given we have a full agenda, but Ms. Jacobson, followed by Ms. Kelly.
Okay, so do you not want questions that are?
No, I mean, I will take, but I don't want to go too far down this road, so I appreciate that we're making an investment in the schedule, and it's important that board members get information.
Okay. Piggyback, going back to Dr. Parrish's comment on pacing and curriculum. So if I'm understanding you correctly, the same material will be covered in the year, but the pacing will be different, so does that mean you'll need to be going faster to cover the same amount of period, given the shortened time that's being taken from the instruction periods?
No, I wouldn't say that they would be going faster. I think that it's just an adjustment of, in terms of how they teach, the standards that they have covered, that they have identified within the curriculum. It's not a matter of them speeding up the material in order to cover everything. So that's not the impression that we want to put forward, that there's an expectation to move faster.
Okay, so the vertical alignment between middle school and high school will remain unaffected?
That is the plan, that's why the work with the, with, around the implementation guides and lesson planning is going to be really critical.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Kelly?
Just to follow up a little bit on what Ms. Gerber was saying, the work that's done in the what I need period, is that graded? Is it part of, like, whatever your deep dive is? Does that count as part of your grade? Like, just, because I don't know what I prefer the answer to be, because I have, I have one student who I know would be motivated by knowing that there was a grade, and I have others that if there was no grade, would probably do no work. So I just didn't know what that's, is the work graded? Is that the plan?
I think it depends on the project, because it could be a long-term project, so it could be something that the kids are working towards. So it could be something that the kids are working towards that's going to be graded. It could be a skills assignment that the students are working on, so it represents practice. So maybe that wouldn't be graded. But I don't think we have a definitive answer that yes, it will be graded, or no, it will not. It really depends on what the assignment is.
Ms. Maxicanelli?
Sorry, follow-up on that is if the kids who are being pulled into resource or missing those periods, then how would that be fair? Because they wouldn't be doing that graded material.
Yeah, it's a, a long-term project, so they would have been assigned that. So at that, with this scenario that I'm presenting, the students would have time to work on a specific part of the long-term project. So it wouldn't be an unfair situation for either student because the other student that's not in the class at that time would getting, be getting supported to work on that project.
Kind of follow up to that. Isn't that a, really a concern now that students are getting intervention, potentially are getting pulled from classes if they need? Well, I think that if, because if, you know, if students right now, if they need any sort of intervention or need specialized services and they're getting pulled from their, their classes, I think the same Ms. Jacobson's concerns really are happening now, potentially for some students. And that, when I hear about this, I mean, I have concerns too. I see this block of time as beneficial to those students. Am I off on that?
No, you are correct. They are, they are missing some class time because of intervention support.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Maxicanelli?
Thank you, just several points. First of all, just to be clear, I've spoken with Dr. Parrish about this and, and continuing the conversation. I just realized that you had written me back, so I apologize, I have to get back to you. But this schedule is still in progress because to Mrs. Gerber's point, some of the things that the teachers weren't happy about, what we saw was not a final iteration. It's still being looked at, so I think just for the board's information on that. Regarding Mrs. Jacobson's point, one way that you pick up time is when you don't have to repeat yourself as much at the beginning of a block. So that if I'm doing reading or I'm doing a lesson, if it gets interrupted at a 43-minute point and I'm coming back the next day and having to recap and then moving on, there, there are certain ways that the curriculum designed this way, implemented this way, that's one place where you pick up some time, is in the structure of that block. To memorization, Mr. Cummings, I don't want to completely denigrate that, of course. But the, the one thing, because I, I do agree that I don't think we can rely on a student's love of learning to take advantage of this win period. So obviously, that's going, that might involve extra work by staff, and that's, I assume, going to be kind of where we have the rough spots. But as a reminder, especially if we find a way, we, you find a way to make the music pullout happen during that time, which is something we are keenly interested in. Between music pullout, meeting with a social worker, meeting with a school psychologist, meeting with guidance counselors, having our gifted time, having sustained silent reading time, having time to meet with a, a school dean for discipline matters, all subject matter interventions either because of struggling or because a student has been absent, all of those things together, to now have them during this intervention block is a huge pickup for keeping our students in the class with their teachers on a daily. So to Mrs. Gerber's point, I, I share the concern that this is just going to become a study hall for many kids, and that's going to be the rough part. But for so, so many kids, this is what's going to keep them in the classroom. And that is what I am extremely intrigued by and see the merits of, of why we need to move forward with this. And, and all of that pontificating, I forgot my question, sorry. Oh, I know, I, one, one thing is that, do you see this, getting back to the middle school attempt of several years ago, do you see there being a role for certain teachers offering, I'll give an example of the gym teacher, who I don't see, I can see a student might have to make up some time, although that's more of a high school issue. But do you see this as being something where they can have a 30-minute, we're going to have an activity here? So I'm just thinking of, because we don't have that second, we don't have any recess, that it could become a physical activity block? Is, is something like that a possibility?
So part of the benefit of this is that that win gets spread across the day. So the PE period is part of that. Something that our PE staff has already started talking about is expanding their use of station work and student choice during this time. So if you are not being pulled for a reading, for a math, for a social work intervention, what have you, and you are in the PE class for your win during that time, you absolutely would have some more opportunity for physical activity and probably with some student choice.
But what about for students who are not assigned to PE during that block? That's what I'm thinking, is that, is this something where they can, because they don't need the intervention in the class that they're in, could they do something like an opt-in to that PE class?
So the complication we have at a middle level that you don't have at a high school level is that we are, everyone's responsible for their students, but we are, we have to always know where our students are. And so in this, at least in this first iteration of the scheduling model, the students would remain in their scheduled class period in order to make sure that we're complying with student safety requirements truly, rather than having them spread all over the building. We did have a discussion as an administrative group around the idea of more of a choice-based win. But if, we'll just take Woods as an example. You know, I have 800 enrolled students. To have 800 students make a choice every single day and to have it be different every single day becomes unmanageable very quickly.
Well, and I think that was part of the last schedule that was problematic then, but thank you for that answer.
Okay, before we move on, does anybody have any questions about the positions specific to the middle school? Ms. Maxicanelli?
Is this the time to bring up the SRBI? Okay, I didn't know if while they were at the table if we should ask, or I, I can wait.
Yeah, why don't we just?
Okay.
Go ahead, Ms. Maxicanelli.
So I guess as we're looking, or as Mr. Cummings is looking to invest further in this 10.5 position, which I can, we just passed it. I can see the merits to that, you know, before school starts at end of school year. However, what I was interested in is if we have any data of any form to show that the position itself has been worthy of the investment, and if we could have some report about that.
To speak to that than the three middle school principals in front of us, absolutely.
I think the SRBI coordinator has been the, one of the biggest additions that we've had in my time as principal, this being my sixth year. The amount of success that the SRBI program had before the SRBI coordinator was in place was solid. But since we brought on the SRBI coordinator, the, it's really gone to maximum speed because we have a person who's focused on collecting data, a person who is focused on planning for student needs specifically, can manage that data, can share that data out to teachers, to teams at a moment's notice. As an administrator, I can do that, but then things get in the way and I lose the focus. This person is focused on that data, is focused on student progress. You can monitor that progress, you can work with teachers to plan for the students' needs, and it really has been something that has been extraordinary to get buy-in with teachers, to have more tier-one interventions happening in the classroom. The articulation process that Mr. Cummings is asking for additional FTE would be fantastic because from fifth grade to sixth grade, we had data this year. We never had data before as clear and concise. We were hitting the ground running day one at Tomlinson to do interventions. We never had that before, and that was clearly because of the SRBI coordinator. So to end the year and to be able to share information with Ward about our students and their needs, that would be, it really would be very, very effective. And, you know, just not losing time for our students, especially now when we have so many things against them, having, having this data and having these interventions and being able to communicate it with somebody who is dedicated to that information, I think, is really necessary.
I just want to echo, again, single most impactful, it's my ninth year, maybe my 10th, I can't remember, I'm losing track. Single most impactful player we've had join the team in my time. This, this coordinator also looks at, with teachers, cross-curricular meetings to review STAR reading and math data sets. Teachers are now focusing on specific case studies. They're looking at student work, focusing on what students know, understand, and are able to do, and determine what the next steps are in instruction. So this SRBI coordinator is working with that team crew, team community of teachers in specific interventions, and, and how do you know? What data are you collecting, teacher, to say he can, or she can't, or she can, or she can't? In addition, this is, is, I wouldn't say a first, but utilizing our unified arts teachers in this process and the conversations, and in many cases, the students are having success in their tech ed class, and bringing that tech ed teacher in to say, you know, so-and-so is struggling in their, in their LA class. What are you doing in your class that engages that student? So it is also, this, this SRBI coordinator is also a push-in, pull-out resource and really utilized as a teacher coach in, in that tier-one level of supports, which has been an area that we've needed work in for, for years. So again, I, I can't say enough for this position.
I would only add one small comment, which is for every case study that represents a single student, there are 10 or more students impacted in the general education curriculum because the level of instruction gets strengthened. And so the teachers are who sit in the SRBI meetings, have those conversations, watch the modeled lesson, then take that back times five periods across the day. So that learning gets exponentially better.
I also will just share that they coordinate as a SRBI coordinator team across the three middle schools. So they do work very closely with one another and meet regularly to discuss the strategies, the plans, the nuts and bolts of what they plan to do with teachers, to make sure, again, that we have that through line across the middle level.
I just find that invaluable feedback to get about the investment, and that was actually beyond what I'd hoped for. So wonderful to hear, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on quickly, just go to the next slide to see if there's any questions, and then we can get right down to going through the budget book. We've had discussions over this in terms of the last few meetings with the math curriculum and the textbooks. Ms. Kelly?
I, I saw where you put the breakdown of how much, at least I thought that was how much we spent last year to renew the math textbooks for one year. But you had mentioned earlier, and I apologize if I didn't get to look through all these, that we put out, I don't see where those numbers are, where you said that if we tiered by the?
Doctors, have a chance, could you come up? No, that's okay, there's a lot of material there.
James Evediansik, Executive Director of Instruction Curriculum and Assessment. There, there is not a question in the packet in front of you to tier the textbooks. The question that was posed was the breakdown between existing courses, which need new textbooks, and current courses, which currently have a textbook that may be replaced. And I could find where that is in a moment, I just don't have it in front of me.
And then on the one where you, where there was a breakdown, if I just do a quick back of the envelope, it looks like we spent about $107-ish thousand on renewing the math textbook licenses for the one year, based on the numbers that are here. Is that even an option to, to do again? Can you roll that over again if need be?
So the textbook companies generally allow us to do a one-year agreement with them. It's generally more costly than the five-year though, in the long run.
Any other questions on math textbooks at this point? Early literacy, we had a presentation at this at our last meeting. Any follow-up questions? Mr. Peterson?
It's not directly related to the budget, but Mr. Cummings, I, I emailed you about some oddities in the presentation. You said that it was going to be fixed, and, and we haven't seen it since, so. I, I didn't even know what needed to be fixed.
We had to, you had suggested, and rightfully so, that, that the Y, X, the.
I asked specifically about the trend line.
Yeah, the scale, the graphs were not common, but the trend line did, and so we did make an adjustment to that. And I apologize, I thought that had been sent to you. Mr. Mancusi and Ms. Doctors Evediansik worked on those slides, and we do have them available for you.
Did anyone else get that? I don't think that we, I got that. I, I would appreciate getting that at some point.
We can send them to you tonight because they're done. We did them Friday. I'm sorry you didn't get them.
Any other questions at early literacy right now? Okay. Rural language? Okay. Teacher stipends? The family and community, Ms. Jacobson?
One is a follow-up request based on the answer. Can we get a breakout of the two positions? It's on, just for those who are following along, it's question number 1, 2, 3, 4 on the first page. The 168, 623. Can we get a breakout of those two positions for salary and benefits? That's just a follow-up for future, for the future. And then my other question is on the family position. Can you just provide a little bit more color about the, the target population that we're speaking to? Is this a chronic absence population? Is this a truant population? And who is currently taking care of those processes currently?
Sorry, I just wanted to make sure, excuse me, I wanted to make sure I got the right question done. So the target populations would be the students, it is a, it's attendance issues. Some of those turn into truancy issues. There are students with EL, language barriers, and not only the students, but the parents with language barriers. As we looked at the, the achievement data that we shared with the board in the fall, we looked again at those issues around engagement, we looked at course enrollment, we looked at attendance. Each of the principals, Ms. Ginggrave, Mr. Formato, Mr. Cavanna separately had identified a need for additional staff or some type of stipend position to be able to reach out and make contact with those families outside of school hours in order to better connect and to help those families support their students. So those were the major data points that we were looking at. When we were analyzing the, the requests, my thought was that rather than try to separate the position into three different kinds of roles, especially because they, this is a feeder pattern issue, or appeared to be a feeder pattern issue, that if we looked at a full-time position who'd be able to work with families at all three levels at the same time, whose students were at different levels, we'd be, have a more effective position. Those, I don't know if Mr. Formato wants to add to this because he was one of the people who put in a request, but that really was the driving force. It's, it's those, those, oh, Mr. Cavanna, thank you. It's those, it's those, those students who are really not engaged, and those families who, for different reasons, aren't engaged in their child's education.
And it would also be to help parents support their children at home. So we would be using that person to train families, to have parents' nights, to really, you know, we reach out to them during the school day, but then some, a lot of times, we can't get in touch with them. So somebody after hours would be very helpful in this endeavor.
And I think at Ward, you know, an area of growth for us is really trying to reach out to our L-populations, specifically with families that English isn't their primary language. So to have a position like this, that could be a liaison, to help us support those families, would be very important. Also, that it's a, I'm a position that families will share from elementary school to high school, the opportunity to help with those transitions to some of our most neediest families.
And, okay.
Second part is who's handling just the regular chronic absenteeism and truancy matters now?
Can you speak to that? Thank you.
Sure, currently, our deans in our house system handles that.
Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, one question. So this position, would this person be working, like, for instance, like, I know, like, the social workers right now do a lot of work with families, so would they be liaison with them? How would they work together? I'm assuming they would work together. I'm assuming they would work together, knowing the work that the social workers do in the schools. So how would that kind of work?
We would expect that the person in this position would work with the building administrators, the building support staff, the guidance counselors, the social workers, and school psychologists to help those parents and students, in a sense, navigate the school system. We have, as you know, we have a high transient rate among some of our students in that feeder pattern. So there is a continual influx of new families that we also have to address and bring up to speed on the school system. So there's a number of people in the district that, in the school system, that we would want them to work with. But we'd also want them to liaison then with other community support agencies to provide additional types of support and resources. Really, it's a networking position for these families. I imagine, Mr. Cavanna mentioned this a bit, but conversations, even as we get into something like course scheduling at the high school, the ability for, and while our counselors do a wonderful job with this work, and they've been doing it for quite some time, the ability for someone who is working for the school system but speaks the language of the parents, can better relate to the needs, and perhaps, you know, our thought is we'd be scheduling separate sessions to better meet the needs of those families. It's really that work around outreach that we see as central to this role.
Just one...
Ms. Gerber?
And then, I guess you just mentioned, you know, with families, you know, in terms of language. So is that something that you would be looking for?
We've identified it as a preferable trait.
Okay.
Mr. Asa?
Just a follow-up to Mrs. Jacobson's question, asking for the breakout of those salary and benefits. I guess this would be to Mrs. Laborius. Do we have a general, and I've asked this in years past, do we have a general fringe rate that we use? Just looking, doing the numbers really quick, it appears that it's well in excess of 30%. I was just curious if you knew.
Executive Director of Finance and Business Systems. Yes, correct. We don't use a rate, per se, but we use a general standard number for health insurance, and then FICA, the percentage for FICA, and the percentage for SSI. And the rate that we were using for health insurance, I believe, was 21, 775 per administrator. And so we did reflect the full cost of the benefits for both positions and just the third of the cost for the DEI administrator.
When you say full cost, the district's full cost? Or does that include the cost sharing? Because that number just seems exorbitantly high.
I can get the number back to you with the breakout. I'll have to look at it again. But we use, it's not a percent. I'm used to using a percent, but here we just use the straight number for the benefits with an assumption about the family size. And it's the member plus one for the health benefits, and then we just apply the straight FICA. And I believe in this case, it looks high because it's only a third of the administrator versus 100% of the benefits. But I can get the direct numbers back to you before our next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Maxicanelli?
Just to the point of the, and again, I do like the idea of this feeder of the McKinley to Tomlinson to Ward. I can definitely see the greatest need there. But are two other schools that have the next highest number of ELL needs between Holland Hill and Burr? Now Burr obviously could be a natural additional extension of this since two out of the three schools are in common. Holland Hill obviously follows a completely different route. Do you see this as being, you know, if this position gets approved, that it will be, we'll focus on that and we'll expand as able? Or is that not part of the vision?
No. What, I know this is a new position. It, you know, inherently in it, it's across three schools. It, there's, as I mentioned, one of the responses to the questions, you know, and I know that the three principals will all play well together, but there's going to be a natural competition for the services of this person, you know, with our intent to hire very well for this position. So I think we want to prove it before we would do any type of expansion. One element of district work involved with this is we are going to ask that this person's, one of their roles would be the essential point of contact for our open choice families. So that there is some district-wide work involved. And as you know, we're about 100 students now in open choice, so that's quite a number of students to be involved with as well. But we feel that we can do a much better job with community outreach with those families, welcome them to Fairfield. And if this position proves successful, I would say that we would then begin to roll it out into different schools or different feeder patterns. Eventually, maybe we have one in each feeder pattern, but I don't want to get ahead of ourselves. Success first.
Ms. Jacobson?
Proving successful, I'm sure that analysis has been done on this, but what would be your metric of proving successful? Is there a certain percentage that you're looking to reduce the absenteeism or truancy or just further engagement? I mean, what is the metrics of success on this position?
The attendance issues. And it would be both the individual attendance issues, but also the percentage rates at the schools. That would be our number-one priority. We have to get students into school. Then we would be, you know, that, to my mind, would be a leading indicator. As that happens, then we will look for corresponding increases, particularly at secondary, because we want to widen our enrollment in the higher-level classes. That's going to begin at the middle school work. We'd also, those would be, I guess, the two big issues to begin with, Ms. Jacobson. I think with that type of work, we'd also want to get to, but I think that this would take a couple of years, is the student achievement data that would come with it. But attendance absolutely first.
And just a follow-up to Mrs. Gerber and the question about...
I'm sorry, Ms. Vitale. I just, another piece, Ms. Jacobson, I should add, is we'd also want to look at discipline referrals and those types of things.
Sort of to piggyback on Mrs. Gerber's question and Mrs. Maxicanelli, just about the other schools that are not in the Ward feeder pattern, could the social workers at the elementary school use this person as a resource potentially?
Potentially, yes. I think that, you know, there's nothing to say that if we have identified community services, if we've identified a community forum, if, that we're going to do something for the ninth graders entering Ward, that we would not do invite the ninth graders entering Ludlow, that might fall under some of these same needs. So I don't want to say that we're going to be exclusive to those three schools, particularly in those types of outreach performances.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Maxicanelli?
Just one quick follow-up to that, is that I recognize all of the intermediate metrics used to measure the success of this position, but I would have to say that the overarching has to be the academic. Everything else is a means to an end. You know, if you are behaving better, if you're following the school rules, you should achieve more. If you're here, you should achieve more. You know, if you're in, and thus the achieving more, then they'll also go on to, you know, more rigorous curriculum. So, you know, I would very much want all of the conversation to be about, this is, I mean, this is achievement gap, right here, this position, you know, and that kind of targeted look at the families who most need that help and the cultural introduction to Fairfield Public Schools, the expectations and everything. It's, I mean, it's in some ways aggressive, and yet it's so needed. So it's, I find this very intriguing, the position.
I'm going to get ahead of myself again, even after just that I wouldn't. But I think if we were to project out potentially a year, maybe two, and we were to talk about adding one of these positions, the leading piece of data at that point would be attendance, because you know that's, you just said it, you have to get people in the seats. Then we would see the corresponding rise. But I'd be looking for that data first, and I would hope that we'd start to see that in September, October, November, because we know now who those students are who are chronically absent, and the families that are, quite honestly, dealing with issues that are causing some of that chronic absenteeism.
But just so that it's real data, I assume we're going to separate out COVID-related absences versus, and obviously this would have to be for the older students, versus attendance prior to that, because anyone is going to look good if you're looking at the attendance data versus when we're in, when it was COVID.
Absolutely. That's right.
Okay. Any follow-up questions on this position? Mrs. Maxicanelli?
I was the one who had submitted the question regarding, could this be a potential after-school, you know, in other words, that it essentially can become an additional part-time job for a 1.0, even FTE person? Just, I mean, thinking of, we've got site supervisors for the sports, and if this could be that, I just think that could really open up the pool of candidates. And so I was very happy to hear that that is something that could be considered.
Yes, I'm certainly not opposed to it. You know, we do have some models of this in the district now. As you know, that our high schools and middle schools have textbook managers, they make sure that, and they do a fabulous job inventorying textbooks and other instructional materials. So there's some element of this. They're very, you know, those, while those textbooks are locked up behind doors, there's an openness to that position. What this position is, and they do a lot of that work, those are full-time employees who are doing a lot of that work before and after school and during the summer. So you're right, there's a model for this that does exist, and the potential to hire somebody who's already familiar with the school system could be a plus.
Okay. Any follow-up questions? Technology, equipment replacement, and I know that we'll get to this more, probably when we go over capital, but if there's anything right now, being that Ms. Burns is here. Okay. Moving on. Mr. Asa?
So I know there was a question asked about this, about sharing services, and I don't know if we'll get more into this at the next meeting in maintenance, but I do have a question for Mr. Papa George.
Mr. Papa George, can you come up, please?
I apologize in advance if this was already answered in this document, but looking at this $114,000 1.0 and using similar percentages to calculate what the actual salary would be, what could $80,000 in a contract get us versus one man or a woman? And I preface that by, when we have a contract with a company, we generally have access to multiple people that could respond or come out, similarly, you know, preventive maintenance, anything like that. So I'm curious, why would we spend, you know, $80,000 plus benefits on adding an FTE versus contracting this out? And what, would it really be savings? I'd like to see those numbers.
Well, if you allow me, I will pull those together for you. We do currently have a bid out, or a bid with a company that does our preventive maintenance, so I'm sure I can pull some numbers together for you off of that.
That would be great, because I think, not only for this board, but I think, you know, obviously, you know, as we move along in this process, you know, we would want to make sure that we're making worthwhile investments. And if I can support a one FTE that's going to get us more bang for our buck, you've got to show me that. But if we can get multiple people through a contract, you know, that's going to be hard to sell.
Absolutely.
Mr. Peterson?
Just along those lines, I asked a question about contracting this in the questions. And in your answer, you say, right now, we utilize a contractor to provide preventive maintenance for our system and large-scale repairs, our in-house staff is available for repairs, and to respond to concerns quickly while buildings are occupied. Do you think at this point we are understaffed from the standpoint of responding quickly to outages, where having a person on staff would be preferable to going through the contractor route?
Currently, I do believe that we are. And as we continue to add improvements, such as the addition at Mill Hill, Holland Hill, those buildings just add more strain to our existing workforce for HVAC. And we currently, as you know, we currently have two full-time HVAC technicians. So if we have three different buildings with a concern, that's one of them is waiting at that point.
What's the response time like for a repair from a contractor now?
I would have to get the response time. Obviously, if we put something out to bid, we could specify our responses within that. My experience from past, not with Fairfield, but past, was that when we did have contractors doing the emergency repairs, such as our in-house staff do now, it was a, it came at a much larger price tag, because what it ultimately did was gave us a designated representative from that company in the district at all times. So we were almost paying the salary of an employee through a contracted service as opposed to having someone in-house.
So you're saying with this size contract, we would effectively be subsidizing an employee from the contracting company?
Correct. And to Mr. Asa's point, you do get a, there is a benefit to that as well, because if somebody's out sick, they automatically fill that position with someone else. So you don't have the sick time, vacation time. You always have a person available. So there are benefits to it as well.
I guess, like, Mr. Asa, I would like to see a more detailed cost breakdown on contracting versus in-house FTE.
Absolutely.
Mr. Asa?
Yeah, and just one more follow-up to this. I'm just curious if you could elaborate. What exactly does adding brand-new HVAC to building projects, how does that create more strain and work? I understand changing filters and stuff, but shouldn't with brand-new systems, we be getting a period of time without as many failures?
Absolutely. But as anything, there's also growing pains in there, so that when we have new systems, they're being utilized for staff by the, by staff for the first time. There's some growing pains where we have to make adjustments, set points, that type of equipment, where we have staff going out to look at them, and they're not getting elevated to a warranty issue, because it's not a warranty issue, it's more of some adjustments that are needed along the way.
Mr. Peterson, sorry.
Sorry, another thing that just occurred to me. You did a great job the other night pitching to the Board of Finance and other town officials regarding possibly expanding our air conditioning coverage in town. If we added an FTE in this position, would that better prepare us for future years when we roll out an expanded system? And basically, how much additional capacity would we be adding to our staff? And I imagine if we went ahead with our full AC program, we would need to add, under your theory of staffing, additional FTEs. But I guess how much would this iteration buy us?
Honestly, my belief would be that this would better prepare us for that full AC rollout for the district. I don't necessarily think that we would need to increase beyond the third position. We have, we would have three, and then we would also have to reevaluate our preventive maintenance program for the equipment, because obviously that would bring in a lot more equipment, a lot more filters, a lot more along that way.
Mr. Papa George, should the HVAC projects get approved by other town bodies? Do you foresee this position potentially working with building committees?
Not necessarily this position, this position, but the supervisor we have in place currently that oversees our controls and our HVAC equipment, that person would definitely be involved with the, I would want that person to be involved with the building committees moving forwards.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. This is the last of the slides, so we will go, that's it. All right. So we will move on to review of section enhancements, which the slides covered a lot of, and historical data, pages one through seven. Mr. Peterson?
I have a couple. I guess I'll start on page five. Mr. Cummings, I noticed, you know, I looked at the areas of consolidation with town departments for differences from last year's budget, and I thank you for your detailed answer with that. One thing I wanted to throw out there, you had pitched to us in Finance Committee at some point during the past year, the possibility of exploring shared vehicle maintenance services with the town. Did you pursue that at all?
Mr. Papa George, speak to that.
I apologize, I was typing the questions you asked previous. I heard my name, and I didn't hear the question.
I wanted to know if we have pursued shared vehicle maintenance services with the town. Mr. Cummings had told us in Finance Committee several months ago, I believe, that since we only have five vehicles, I believe, that, you know, and the town has a much larger fleet, it might be something we could wrap. We're taking on whatever, $320,000 this year of town expenses that used to be town, maybe a little can go the other way.
Absolutely. So, to date, we are currently utilizing the DPW garage staff to service our five vehicles. We do, like any garage, we do pay for the service, we pay for the materials. We're still working on a rate for hourly for the work being done, but in the meantime, they've been gracious and have continued to maintain our vehicles for us.
All right, so currently in our budget, there's no line anywhere for vehicle maintenance, because it's being done by the DPW?
There is for materials, for the parts for the vehicles.
Okay, all right, thank you. I have some other questions, I don't-
For Mr. Papa George?
No, actually.
Okay.
But if anyone else-
Anybody have any questions, or can Mr. Peterson keep the floor? Seeing none, Mr. Peterson, the floor is still yours.
Thank you. I guess this would be a question both from Mr. Cummings and Ms. Laborius. I had asked a question on the budget adjustments line on page seven, the very bottom of page seven, where we say there is $1,866,108 in budget reductions that are contemplated by this budget. And I guess you had answered, I had asked, where are other large areas of savings that we've looked for in this budget? Because it looks like the bulk of that $1.9 million is due to enrollment going down, and enrollment-related factors. And you pointed out that there is a slightly smaller allocation for supplies, techs, and materials. There's a $31,362 less than last year. And you also say that, I guess I'm implying, you're implying that the tech replacement budget would have been higher, except you tried to, it is a year-over-year increase, but you tried to keep that top line under control. But beyond that, were there any, were there any cost savings measures that were explored by the administration?
Mr. Peterson, I can address that, and the answer is yes. I would be hesitant, though, to go into detail. You know, a lot of those conversations, as you know, I'll leave it at this, and we can perhaps talk in the executive session if the board so chooses, but as everybody's well aware, the biggest driver of our budget increase year after year is staffing, right, and benefits. So, we did look at several potential ways to reduce that area. Ultimately, and I don't really want to go into detail, because we didn't go any further than that, and I don't want to get people upset, but we did consider a number of those possible ideas, and I will say only that we've put them aside for further consideration. There's some work that we feel that we need to do to better prepare people for those possible changes.
All right, I would want to hear about those, and some justification for why they weren't moved forward. And I don't know whether this, to our chair, is something we can discuss in an executive session at some point. If it bears on the budget, I think that we need to discuss it. I understand your reticence in some of these areas, but, you know, also, there are other things that, you know, we, you know, a year ago, in Finance Committee, we tried to brainstorm a bunch of ideas that maybe we could bring back to the board for further discussion. I wonder if any of them were things that you considered over the course of the budget process? I mean, we had talked about examining ECC pricing, doing a market study and seeing whether we have a competitive rate there, or whether we could increase that. Was that something that we looked into?
We have done that, we've continued to maintain our yearly increase. One of the concerns, as we've talked about in the past with ECC, is maintaining the peer ratio, and our concern is if we raise rates too much, we'll lose the peer ratio, which is one of the, one of our biggest concerns in maintaining the validity of that program. So, that is definitely, that is certainly something we've looked at. We continue to look at potential other revenue streams. You know, we have, we're making progress, and Mr. Mancusi can speak to this, on the Waltham Fitzgerald campus. There's a number of, there's a number of ideas that we can pursue. I will say to you that, and to varying degrees of effectiveness, or perhaps savings or reductions, but I think some of those larger ones will require a deeper conversation in an executive session.
All right, I'm going to leave that here for now. I think you and I are going to need to have a talk. One of the things that I'm frustrated about with this budget is there appears to be very large top-line increase, and I'm not seeing, and maybe you can convince me of this, I'm not seeing a lot of offsets. I'm seeing a lot of additions and very few subtractions, and that's a concern of mine. So, if there are other discussions that you've had that we need to have in a more confidential setting, I'd be very open to hearing those.
I'd be like, I'd like to do that.
And we can have an executive session, because some of these are personnel-related.
There are several things that I have on my list that we discussed in open session in Finance Committee. I'm not going to mention them here, in case those are some of the items, but we had some of those discussions in public meetings, but I'll leave that there for now. And I guess, I called Ms. Laborius up here for nothing. The one thing that I would say, I hope you don't mind my ribbing about the spelling of Osborne Hill School as an alum of that elementary school, that's one of those things that, I am the defender of that namespelling.
Mr. Peterson, I will never add an additional E to the end of that word again, I apologize.
Excellent, thank you.
Mr. Peterson, any other questions? All right, any, Ms. Guernsey.
Just to piggyback off Mr. Peterson on page seven, budget adjustments, I was wondering if Mr. Cummings or someone else could speak to the reduction of the 4.0 teachers at the middle school level. Specifically, I'm just trying to understand the impact that this would have on the students that would be receiving instruction from these teachers compared to students that would be in like a traditional team, our traditional team model.
Well, I think that these teachers would, there'd still be a traditional team. The way we're looking at constructing the schedule would not take away any of the ability of that team to meet as often as the other teams do. I think it's important to remember that it had, we've had split teams before at the middle school. This isn't something new. When we've had, only until this year were the teams fully deployed at, were there four-member teams at Roger Ludlow, for example. And the way we're looking at, as we, we've not finalized, because we haven't finalized the schedule yet, but there would be one team servicing students at both Roger Ludlow and Fairfield Woods. The potential exists in how that schedule is made, our expectation would be that we would recreate the ability for that team, not only to meet as a team, but to be able to meet with their, as other teachers do, to meet with their curriculum peers at one of those two schools as well, and to receive support. So, again, following the model of the elementary school, and to that matter, when reductions or additions are made in the FTE allocations at the high school, it's an enrollment-driven model. If, so we're working to maintain the student-teacher ratios that exist in Tomlinson, for example, and in the seventh and eighth grades at the other two schools, at all three schools.
Any other questions on these pages? Ms. Kelly.
It's kind of along the lines of, to what Mr. Peterson was saying, and maybe more of a comment really than a question, but last year, I know that, you know, we had a sizable increase, I think it was 5.1%, we asked for, and there was a lot of discussion about, well, we were filling the hole, so really, it's only 3%. We spent a lot of time talking about trying to justify only, only a 3%-ish rate, increase. Now, we're proposing, or looking at a 6% increase. And there was talk back last year about how this was unsustainable, we know there needs to be change, and here we are the following year, looking at a 6% increase. And I just, it concerns me, the sustainability of it concerns me, and I, like Mr. Peterson, would be interested in hearing more about what some of the other possible reduction issues that you looked at, just because I really worry about the sustainability of budgets like this.
I'll say what I've said before, when you've got a budget that is so enrollment-driven, there are relative limits to the types of reductions you can make. I think the other thing that is in our consideration, as we've discussed these things, is the ability to do those things well. And just like when we add on initiatives, and the board rightfully raises concerns about, or our staff rightfully raises concerns, are about our ability to do it well, there's, you have those same needs when you make reductions, because you have to make those additional adjustments. So, I want the board to know that throughout the budget process, we explored a number of ways to look at budget reductions. I think that the thing that has to be weighed by the board is the ability to take on the challenges that those budget adjustments could pose, because they are going to challenge a traditional setting of a lot of our schools and our school settings. Even just discussions that we've started to have and will be accelerating, I think, as we look at the redistricting issues and the facility usage issues, those are the types of changes that are going to lead to the substantive, long-term changes in budgets. And as we, if we continue to approach the idea of adding a piece here or taking a piece away there, that's not the long-term change that's going to happen. So, there's a question to the administrators and the staff about what we can do, and we will do the work, but I think there's also a question about the, what direction does the board want us to go in? Because we will go there, and I know the Finance Committee has begun to approach those things. And I, we want to do that work. I want to be really clear, because we recognize that it's not sustainable. We know it can't keep being done. But as you look, as you look, as we talk further tonight and next week about the current increase in front of you, I think you'll see that the things that are driving, the major drivers of this requested increase are things that are so much related to the circumstances we find ourselves in right now. And while that's driving some costs forward, it's also hindering somewhat our ability collectively to be more proactive in our approach.
Mr. Peterson.
I just want to observe that one of the reasons I wanted to start this discussion last year after the last budget cycle was because of exactly what Mr. Cummings said, that we're being pressured by lack of resources, and we need to be able to do the most with what we can, with what we have. And I'll just make as a general observation, this stood out at me. We talk every year about how the big driver of budget is staffing, and the percentage of this budget that is devoted to staff salaries, I went over the last 10 years of budgets, it's the lowest in 10 years. In the 22, 23 year, it's 59.34%, in 2013, it was 63.5%. If we add the, you know, kind of combined benefits and staff salaries, it's still the lowest percentage in 10 years that we're devoting to people versus stuff. And, you know, all the time that I've been on this board, I think that, you know, the argument that's been made, and there's a lot of validity to it, is that the people are what matter, but we are increasingly spending not on people, but on stuff. And I just wanted to make that observation, because it kind of undermines this notion that we have, that I have heard for years about what's important in a budget. Just as a general observation.
Ms. Jacobson.
I just wanted to follow up on that comment a little bit and say that, while I agree with Mr. Peterson's standpoint in terms of a, you know, historical analysis of the situation, the reality is, is that while we were funding for people, we were not doing enough on the And so, for 20 years, when you're not funding enough stuff, that stuff needs to get fixed.
I just want to say that Ms. Jacobson and I have talked about this exact topic, and I don't disagree with her at all.
I have something to say, but I'm not going to, because we're going to move along. We'll, we'll get into it. Okay, seeing no other questions on pages one through seven, let's move on to the executive Mr. Peterson.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'll go into a couple of things here, if that's okay. Homebound sped instruction, well, you know what, I'm going to leave that, I'm going to leave that for, you're just talking about, you wanted to do just the first couple of pages.
The first couple of pages.
All right, I'll hold these for when we go section by section, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Just these first couple of pages, the big picture recap. Okay, seeing none, of course, if anybody, something comes up, we can always go back. Moving on to instructional services, pages 38 to 39. And including the backup.
Okay. I had asked, and this is on page three of our spreadsheet, I had asked a question about the homebound sped instruction line. I wondered if there was more context that Mr. Mancusi could give us about that, other than it's difficult to predict.
Mr. Mancusi.
And this specifically relates to the line on page 83 in object 301, number 62.
Rob Mancusi, Executive Director of Special Education and Special Programs. This is- This is an account that is difficult to predict, it depends on the number of students who are, you know, hospitalized and need short-term tutoring prior to return to school. So we can certainly take another look at that number, but it does fluctuate from year to year, depending on the number of students who are hospitalized.
I guess it just, it seems like we always undershoot it. It's another one of those numbers that we are always underestimating. I looked through past budget years, and it seems to be a trend.
We'd be happy to take a second look at that.
Mrs. Maxon Canelli?
As a follow-up to that, I had asked the question, which was answered on page five, regarding the remote learning, but I'm not, I had put that under staff salaries, and I'm not sure now if it's under staff salaries or the instructional services for remote learning, but we did have staff exclusively devoted to that this year to support especially our elementary school. So since this indicate, the answer on page five indicates that we are not budgeting for that for next year, where has that been reduced from?
Ms. LaBoris, do you have that? I know some of that was in, is in, what's that? Yeah, I was going to say, I think it's all, is it all in grant, though? Because I know we made some change.
And I apologize for asking it now, I wasn't sure if it was part of this, Mr. Peterson's question.
I'm wondering if, while we're doing this, to save the time of the walking in the back and forth, the executive directors want to gather around the table. That means you and Mr. Papa George.
I apologize, Ms. Maxon Canelli, could you repeat that question?
It was the funding source for those students that are in remote learning?
And I apologize, when I said, and that's my fault for not being more clear, when I meant remote learning, I'm talking about the isolated students who have tested positive in the elementary school who are home and who are being supported by a full-time teacher devoted to K1, 2, 3, 4, 5. So I apologize, I shouldn't have said remote in that context, because I know the very, very small numbers of students who actually have full-time remote, that's completely separate, so that, I should have phrased this more specifically.
Yes, so those are still budgeted in the grant, the students that are being supported with, that are related to quarantine, and then we have home, our regular medical, homebound instruction, our regular special ed instruction, per our normal course of action is reflected here in the budget.
Okay, for me, it's just, it's the reminder that I'm very eager, and I didn't know if you mentioned it was going to be February, not, that we get an update for how our grant money is being spent. I didn't even remember that that had been part of the grant, so I do hope that's coming up soon, because I think we have a whole new flavor and lens for looking at that.
We were planning to meet after January to look at the grant allocations.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Jacobson? Yeah, yeah. The yellow.
This question's from Mr. Mancusi, if possible. And this may be a follow-up question, not necessarily having the numbers on this, you know, it's a large increase on professional, what does professional EXP other meet stand for?
We broke our professional expenses account into three parts, to include nursing, speech, and the other is non-psychiatric evaluations, like neuropsychological evaluations, psychological evaluations, and then it's all our instructional support, our literacy evaluations, if we have to contract for staff to do some specialized literacy tutoring with students, it all comes out of that account. I will say to the board, we are currently out to bid for our contracted nursing, and as well as for all the different kinds of evaluations we do, so we can have an approved list of evaluators and try to get some cost containment in that area.
Obviously, nursing and speech is obvious. The consultation services, what is that specific for, if the evals are under the professional expenses other?
Consultation services are our contracts with CCSN, who oversees and trains all of our CLC staff. It's our contract with cognitive behavioral consultants, who oversees implementation of our DBT program throughout elementary, middle, and high school. It's also a contract with Dr. Gammon, our psychiatrist from Yale Child Study Center, who consults with our IMPACT program, and it's our contract with Literacy How for the coaching and the PD that's been provided.
Okay, so are these contracted increases, or are these greater number increases? I'm assuming they're contract increases.
They're really projected evaluation and some contract releases, but I do say the CCSN contract, which is our largest contract, and our Literacy How contract is at the same rate as it was this year.
Sorry, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Peterson?
I had asked a question on page 39, in the description to section 301, instructional services increased by approximately 23,000. This also reflects a shift in priority for the flat school-based allocation to instructional services and includes dedicated funds by the principals to broaden student programs to support DEI and anti-racism initiatives. I guess, I don't understand what mechanism is being talked about there. Are we, I mean, are we talking about, I was confused with this, because it doesn't seem like we're talking about the per-pupil school allocations.
I should be more clear, this is Courtney LaBoris, Executive Director of Finance. That was the school allocation, so a portion of the instructional services is related to school-based allocations, a big portion of it. And overall net, the school-based allocation changed by .034% because we kept it flat from last year, and the enrollment declined just slightly. School by school, you'll see a total increase if there's an increase in enrollment or decrease, but this is the money that's at the discretion of the principals, so you see it change as a result of just a shifting priority within the school-based allocation.
I still am not understanding what is going to be different about how the principals are going to allocate this money this coming school year versus past school years. It seems, it seems like from the description you're talking about, that there's some other, some other mechanism they're going to use.
So the overall increase is mainly due to the increased need for homebound services. I believe it went up by 20,000. In addition, the other part of the net difference, which was a slight increase, is due to choosing the bucket for instructional services in the school-based allocations by approximately $3,000, and that reflected a shift from other things that they're doing with the, within the school-based allocation, from the other items into instructional services.
All right, I may not be explaining myself well here. Are you saying that this is something that principals are doing, that it's not a change in the procedure in any way? You're saying that individual school principals have increased their allocations to some of these, some of these efforts, and these are examples of things that they're doing?
That's correct.
I may want to follow up on this, because I'm not sure I entirely understand what's going on, but thank you.
Okay, I can add some more commentary to here that shows a little bit more detail that makes that point a little clearer.
Ms. Jacobson?
Follow-up to Mr. Peterson's question, are any of the school allocations frozen right now for our principals, given the situation? Because some of these items you have throughout the budget show them as being expended fully in terms of your estimates, so should this board expect that all of our principals will be receiving those funds this year? Yes, they should receive those funds this year. We froze two main non-personnel accounts, which is the capital account, school-based capital outlay, and the technical capital outlay. Okay, so the school allocations are not frozen, and they're accessible by the principals? Correct. Thank you.
Any other questions on this section? Okay, we're moving on to tuition, pages 42 to 43, and Mr. Cummings, I believe you said Mr. Mancusi was going to open with a short presentation?
That is correct. Mr. Mancusi put some slides together. There was a number of questions, both in the document and prior to the, I know last week, around, questions around the identification process, as well as how it directly connected to tuition services and outplacements, and how that process was done. So we thought we'd spend a little time just reviewing that with everybody.
And will this be posted, I'm assuming, on the budget page?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mancusi, I'm bringing you the clicker.
Okay, this information will be more familiar to some of you than others. It really is just an overview of, you know, our federal and legal mandates to, you know, locate, evaluate, identify students, and then ultimately, you know, determine their needs and ultimately their placement. So, you know, there's something called the Individual with Disabilities Act, the IDEA, there is a child find requirement as part of that, so it is a federal law that requires all students suspected of having a disability that reside or attend school within the town of Fairfield, whether attending a public school or one of the private schools in town, be identified, located, and evaluated, determine eligibility for special education and related services. And there are some examples of related services, it includes speech, OTPT, counseling, nursing, some examples. So the referral to special education process, you know, there's something called a planning and placement team, that is the decision-making team, must convene when a student is suspected of having a disability, and the parents are members of that PPT process. At the PPT, the review, the referral is reviewed, the concerns, and then the PPT or the planning and placement team determines whether or not the child should be evaluated. Law requires you need to evaluate the children in all areas of suspected disability. The next slide is the process of evaluating for students' special education eligibility. Once you get written consent, you cannot evaluate without parental consent in writing. Once that is received, you have 45 school days in which to complete the evaluation and determine eligibility for special education. Excuse me. If the student is determined for special education, the PPT must do a series of things. They must develop what's called an individualized education program, or an IEP. They must develop individualized annual goals and objectives in all identified areas of need for the student. The PPT must determine the specific services that the student qualifies for, you know, specialized instruction, say, in reading or in math, speech and language services, or an example, OTPT, and then determine the least restrictive environment in which the student's IEP will be implemented. It's important that the general ed classroom is the default, so when you talk about educating a child within least restrictive environment, you start with that general education classroom. And then, you know, there is a continuum of services, a continuum of placements, which depending on the child's needs, you would, the PPT would consider. And the LR, or the least restrictive environment, for some students may be at a specific point in time, placement in Connecticut State Department of Education-approved private special education program. And then the PPT must meet annually to review student progress toward mastery of IEP goals and objectives, and that is called your annual review planning and placement team meeting. Okay. The next, the general outplacement process, I'll discuss. At times, based on the nature and severity of a student's disability or lack of progress on goals and objectives within a school-based or the homeschool or district-based program, the PPT will convene and discuss what an appropriate placement or an appropriate program can be delivered, and sometimes that includes a placement change and an outplacement. Now, this is important. If there is agreement between the district staff and parents on a change in placement to an approved private special education program, the district will make that initial contact to potential schools. Obviously, parents will be involved in that entire process. And then once an appropriate outplacement is determined, the PPT convenes to do an official change in placement PPT, they convene again in 30 days to review the student's initial transition to the outplacement, and then the PPT is required to meet minimally annually to review a student's progress. That again is the annual review PPT. It's important to note that student readiness to return to FPS is underconsider at each PPT. When students are outplaced, there is always the ultimate goal that the student will come back to us, when ready, when ready, all right. If there is agreement between district staff and parents on a student's return to FPS from outplacement, sometimes kids are in an outplacement, and the PPT determines that the student is ready to successfully transition back, so at that point, staff and parents will develop a transition plan back to the district. They'll organize district staff to go see the student in his current school, develop a timeline for return to FPS, develop a student's schedule, update all program documents such as behavior intervention plans, if the kid has a behavior plan, and really collaborate and plan with families throughout this process on return to FPS. It's always a great success when, you know, we work with our families to bring students back. All right. This is the more complicated part of this process. If there is not agreement between the district staff and parents on a change in placement, the parent or the district can file for what's called due process, at which point the legal term is stay-put is enacted, and the IEP that was last agreed upon between the school and the family must be implemented until resolution to the disagreement is, you know, achieved. If the parent files for due process, the district must offer what's called a resolution meeting. Parties may agree to waive that meeting and go right to mediation, and the case will go to due process if it's unable to be resolved. There are mandated timelines by which we have to, you know, operate under this process, so we have to apply those guidelines, or those timelines. The process remains the same as well if one party wants to change placement back to district from outplacement. General unilateral placement process, this is when a student is placed by a parent generally, it's not a PPT placement, it's not a school recommended placement, but it's called a unilateral placement. The general unilateral placement process is a parent will notify the district of their intent to unilaterally place their child in a private school, and that they're seeking the district to pay the cost of the tuition. At that point, we have 10 days to respond in writing, so we send them a written response. Parents and the district, parents and district attorneys are generally involved at this point. Often, we convene PPTs to review parent concerns mentioned in their intent letter to unilaterally place. We revise the IEP accordingly, which would be the IEP that we would We revise the IEP accordingly, which would be the IEP that we would defend if we went to due process, and that that's as appropriate. And if a parent files for due process meeting, a due process, a resolution meeting must be offered to resolve the disputes. Again, parties can agree to waive the resolution meeting, go to mediation, at which point the State Department of Education will appoint a mediator prior to going to due process hearing to avoid prolonged and a costly process. The district with its attorney will review the facts of each unilateral placement to determine the district's risk and exposure, along with potential cost if the case proceeded to a due process hearing. Oftentimes, at that settlement, it's, a settlement agreement is determined. Sometimes I have to call Mr. Cummings into the meeting with Ms. DC so we can make a joint decision on, you know, the best decision to make at that time. Finally, the, the potential cost of due process hearings to the district. Just, this is our legal cost for due process hearings, average from seven thousand to ten thousand dollars a day. So for, the average due process hearing is five to seven days, at an approximate cost of thirty-five thousand to seventy thousand dollars to the district. That is just to present our case. If we are not the prevailing party in the due process hearing, and the, the school district may be responsible for the additional costs of parent attorneys, which would be that thirty-five to seventy thousand dollars generally, plus the cost of tuition to the school that the parent unilaterally placed in, and it's often more than one year. So that's why, you know, when we are in mediation, or when we do get a notice of unilateral placement, we do carefully study the facts of the case, determine our risk, because in many cases, you know, just the cost of going to due process costs more than the actual placement. So we, we make, we make those decisions carefully. So that is my brief presentation on, you know, the child find process, the identifica, the testing process, identification, eligibility determination, and the placement to and from outplacements, and the cost of due process. Any questions?
Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, thanks very much for this. I, I don't know that much of this is going to be a surprise to members of the board, but I, I do think that this is a great thing to have as a resource on our website for other town bodies that we can refer them to when they don't understand the process, because every budget season, we, we field a lot of questions from other elected officials. This is a, is an arcane process, and so it's, it's good to have this, this kind of guidepost through it. The only question that I have on this is in terms of the cost of the due process hearings, who pays if we win?
We pay if we win. We pay our fees, no matter what, we win or lose.
So the most, the least that we're going to pay for any due process hearing is half the cost?
Yes.
The most we can pay is a hundred percent of the cost, the overall cost?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Asa.
Can you just clarify, when you say seven to ten thousand per day?
That's the legal cost of our attorneys to prepare for the hearing, to prepare staff for the hearing.
I understand that. I guess my, my question that I was formulating in my head was, how much more would it be if we did not have an attorney in-house that is our HR director? Like, what, what portion is our in-house counsel covering versus not? Like, are we?
Our attorneys from Shipman and Goodwin represent us one hundred percent of the time.
Okay, so on every case, it's to no savings to us to have internal counsel for this particular?
We don't realize any savings in this particular case. For other cases, like potential expulsions, or, you know, developing some stipulated agreements, we call them, where there are agreements between the parents and the schools for students who are up for expulsion, we do realize significant savings in that area by having Ms. DC on counsel, because she will represent us in expulsion hearings.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. And, you know, it's very difficult to ask this question, because obviously, in, if you were to make the determinate, I mean, basically, if you go to this process, there's a reason that you're fighting it, and you say that ultimately, the cost-benefit analysis, the cost could be more than an outplacement, but really, once they're outplaced, aren't they pretty much outplaced? So it's going to be that outplacement cost every year?
Not necessarily. It depends on the nature and the severity of a student's disability. For example, somebody who is extremely medically fragile, that we don't feel that we can safely and appropriately program for here, they may go to, you know, an approved private special education program, like St. Catherine's. Or, but if we have a student, say, who has some emotional, social-emotional problems or learning disabilities, and they go to one of the CES programs, we work very diligently to, to get them back to district as soon as, as soon as possible.
Okay, that was going to be my follow-up to that. What, what is the process of that and the likelihood of that happening?
Again, depending on the nature of a student's disability, we return kids to district all the time. They're initiated by us in consultation with the outplacement staff, and they're initiated by us in con, in conversation with parents, and parents will call us at times, you know, to work with us to get their students back in district.
So last question is, if, if our district and your staff feels that this child should come back to district, but the parent disagrees, do we go through this seventy thousand dollar process again?
The one thing about special education is it's not black and white world. It's a gray world. So if we feel that we have an appropriate program and are ready to return a kid, but the parent doesn't, in those cases, it often goes to, because, you know, a hearing officer will hear from their staff, who has worked with the child now, and who knows the child's current level of functioning better than we do. There may be an outside evaluator in, to help make that decision, who then becomes an expert witness in a due process hearing, and his or her, you know, opinion will carry a tremendous amount of weight on how that hearing will go. So it really depends.
Okay, thank you for those answers, because honestly, I'm, I'm not trying to, to dig or anything, or, or single anybody out, I just was honestly curious.
Ms. Jacobson?
Following up on the due process question, I assume you wouldn't go through this process unless you felt you had, you know, a serious case. So I'm just wondering, out of all of our outplacements on a, there's no typical year anymore, but what percentage do you take to due process?
We haven't been to due process in, since I've been here yet. We've had several mediations where, in our mediations, depending on the strength of our case, we'll, you know, we get favorable agreements in terms of the amount of a settlement agreement at time, or we will work with, with the parent and the outplacement on trying to, trying to return a kid.
Mr. Asa?
Just to follow up on that. So, thank you for this presentation and everything, but basically what you're saying is this has no bearing on our budget?
It has a bearing on your budget if we go to, if we have a strong case and we win, or if we go and we don't have a strong case, but we believe we have a strong case and we lose.
Understood, but you just said, since you've been here, we have not gone to this process full-fledged.
We have not.
Okay, so let me ask that again. Have you factored in any seventy thousand dollar due process hearings into your proposed budget?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Mancusi, how much does a typical mediation cost?
Again, it's, it's typically a seven or eight-hour process. It's like four or five hundred dollars an hour for our attorney. If we come to an agreement, they might take another couple hours to prepare a settlement agreement, so a mediation will cost about, just for legal fees, if you're paying, say, four hundred dollars an hour, times maybe ten hours tops, so four thousand dollars maybe, plus the cost of whatever that settlement is.
Can the mediation go on for more than one day?
Yes.
How many mediations do you do?
This area of the state does more mediations than, than most. So in terms of mediations that I do per year, you know, I would just be guessing now, it goes in waves, I can get that information for you, but we, we spend, we spend a, a good amount of time in mediation throughout a school year.
And, and just, just so people understand, in a mediation, there's the parent, their lawyer, the district, their lawyer. So it's just not going to due process, which is more like a trial?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And, and just anecdotally, as somebody who is very much involved in the SEPTA community, I just want to remind everybody that there is no place for most parents that they want their children to be, other than their home school. So a lot of parents, if they find themselves in this situation where they have to unilaterally place or outplace their child, will probably always be looking for a way to get their child back to district, just to keep that in mind, because it's not always a fight, you know, and, and they're going to stay there, you know, for the rest of their school career.
Ms. Kelly, second by Ms. Maxicelli.
Just real quick, you had mentioned, you said that we bring kids back to the district all the time, and I think we have eighty-four kids projected to be outplaced. Do you have a percentage of, you know, historically, how many kids we bring back? I know every year is different, and every case is different, but historically, if you could ball, is it two percent? Is it ten percent? Is it fifty percent?
I would be happy to try to put something together for you for next week on that, but I, I will tell you, you know, I meet with the special ed coordinators weekly on Thursdays, and one of the things that is a standing agenda item is taking a look at our outplacements and talking about which kids we feel are prepared to possibly come back to district. We do make contact with the parents to discuss it, we make contact with the schools, so it is something that we are always, always trying to do.
Mrs. Maxicelli?
Thank you. In no particular order, we had a pass board member who always liked us to consider reevaluating our legal team, and I was curious, just, you know, what kind of metrics do you use to evaluate that Shipman is providing us with the best service?
Shipman is there whenever we need them. They have a number of attorneys who are on call for us. They're a reputable legal firm. We're happy with their service. They provide professional development for our staff on like 504 updates or legal updates annually. They provide professional development updates to our district leadership team. So we're happy with, with our legal representation from Shipman and Goodwin.
So there's, and, and of this I'm ignorant, most of this I already knew, but, so, no data points on win percentage of when we believe we have a strong case and we go to mediation, how well do they do on our behalf? Because the first couple of things you talked about were attendance issues, and as I've already done with Mr. Cummings, that is not for me the ultimate barometer of a metric of success.
I can tell you, when we go to mediation, and we discuss the facts of the case, and we determine what are, you know, what we feel if we're going to settle, what is our point of like, you know, walking away from, from the discussions if we feel that the mediator or the parent's attorney is not reasonable? And we, we're pretty, you know, mediators will say, when everybody walks away unhappy, it's a good mediation. But I, I will say, there's many mediations where we've walked away and I was happy with the way it, it came out, because they're responsive to our concerns and our questions. And I, I don't know if that answered your question.
Not really, but I, I, and I, I don't mean to be disrespectful of the fact that you are unhappy. I am not saying that that is not a metric in and of itself. I'm only just raising the issue because, and, and I am very sensitive to Mrs. Vitale's point. These are children we are talking about, so I am not insen, I don't want to be, come across as insensitive to that or not. But this is a multimillion-dollar budget item, and we are here to, to talk about the budget, so I'm afraid that on this point, we have to talk about it as numbers and, and not as children, and, and, but again, I, I want to be sensitive to the fact that these are children we're talking about, but there are cases out there where we will be right and the parent will be wrong, or, and not that the parent's not fighting for their child, but that we can serve that child. So I just wanted to have the assurance from staff that it is something you reflect on and that you feel that we have the best representation possible, and I will say again, because it is a huge budget item.
Your point is very well taken, and my happiness throughout that process really doesn't matter, but I, I only talk in what I think is, is fair to the district, because sometimes I do think the process is so slanted away from the district that, you know, we already go in, we do have the burden to prove, so we have to prove that we have an appropriate program, and it, it's just sometimes you feel like the process is not, you're not on a, a level playing field all the time.
Right, thank you. Back to the point about if there is agreement between district staff and parents on a student's return, what is, because you have a six-bullet-point timeline for that, how can you quantify, qualify that in terms of, quantify that in terms of days, months? There's agreement, what's the turnaround to re-enrolling the student in FPS?
When it makes the most sense for the student. So, for example, if it's May and we're at an annual review and planning for a kid to return, it probably will be during, you know, extended school year or the summer school and, and kind of transition in that way for the fall. If it's in the fall, it'll be, you know, a, a four-to-six-week process. So if the kid, if September, October, you get the kid back by November. So it really depends on a couple factors, but as soon as it makes sense for the kid and the family.
Okay, because as I already articulated last week, I have a very pointed interest in, in evaluating, and he's like, that was one of my questions, that how many of our students are outplaced for the services that we are now providing in our Early Literacy Academy?
I, I just looked at it, at today, at our, our numbers. The two schools that we did, you know, come up with the average cost when we talked about the Early Literacy Academy last week, and I'd rather not name those two, but the two schools where our students are either unilaterally placed or PPT-placed for literacy needs. Right now, we have twenty-one, and we're paying over one million dollars for them to go there.
So it would be a positive budget impact to bring some of those students back?
Yes.
And we now have the service with basically a full-day immersion in literacy support, where it does make sense to pursue some, now, obviously, some of those are going to be too old, this is elementary school targeted, but it does make sense that we could be bringing some of those students back and that we should be planning for that now, as we have a known entity to which, to talk to those parents in the upcoming PPT of this spring.
Yes, but it, it's really important in those cases that without agreement from parents, now that the kid is not with us and is outplaced, hearing officers are going to be very hesitant if there's not agreement between the schools- if there's not agreement between the school district and the parents to change placement again. So, but it definitely, our Early Literacy Academy, I don't know if you sense my excitement about it when I talk about it, but I think-
Not quite.
I think it has the potential to be an extremely impactful program long term.
Mr. Asa, follow up.
Just to piggyback on that, so for, and I apologize if I'm not getting this, but talking about bringing those kids back, isn't the Early Literacy program more about preventing future outplacements versus bringing those 21 kids back and saving that potential $1 million years from now? Just to clarify.
That's the primary. That's the primary reason that we're creating that in district program, before we lose kids to out of district.
Because most of these kids that are outplaced wouldn't necessarily benefit from the Early Literacy Academy, correct?
Well, we do have, most of our students who are in these two schools, they're still in elementary school. But it would be, it's a lot more difficult to return kids from programs where parents are happy and the school feels that, and especially if they can demonstrate the kids making progress in there. So it's, the primary focus of the Early Literacy Academy in Fairfield is to maintain students in district. But that doesn't mean we don't have the opportunity to return kids.
Understood, and I'm as enthusiastic as Mrs. Maxicinelli, I just wanted to clarify whether it was, are we looking at that savings down the road either way, more because of future kids or the ones now?
It's more future.
Okay, and as a follow up to that, we know that this is a very long budget process, and this is where your happy vibes will be very helpful, Mr. Mancusi, because you've got the political soothing here of working on this now. I can say right now, I'm not looking to make an amendment to the budget of cutting the tuition line in anticipation of Mr. Mancusi successfully returning seven students. I'm not looking to do that. But in the long haul of either other boards making cuts, or at the end of the line are being able to say to the RTM, "We can afford to have you cut this because we have returned," I'm looking long game here. I would like this to be looked at in a friendly, happy way aggressively to these 21 families, because to Mrs. Rotelli's point, if the majority of them weren't looking to leave in the first place while they recognized the gains and everything, and hopefully maybe even if parents were willing, and this is not something where they can be put on the spot, but that anecdotally, they can share the academic and the social benefits of what our program has to offer, we could also address what might be a short-term issue with our budget with this item. So I'm entirely sympathetic to Mr. Asa's point. This is nothing I would want to count on, but I think we're crazy if we don't now plan for that and see if we can't pull some of the back with a program that will equally serve their child. And to that point, I had also, I'd meant to ask this last week and did not, the ELA right now is a mix of second and third graders. Will the staff there follow them, I'm thinking of like the Math Academy, follow them as third, fourth graders, assuming they still need this service, and what we're bringing in new is going to be second, third grade again? Or how is that working?
In our initial conversations with Literacy Howe and with Erica Mueller, our special education teacher, that is kind of the setup that we're looking at, second, third, and then third, fourth. In terms of if Erica follows the students, the third and fourth, or if the second teacher, if we're fortunate enough to have your support on this, you know, those decisions will be made.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Peterson.
Just a follow up to the line of questioning that Ms. Cinnelli was talking about in terms of bringing kids back. Now, we're budgeting, in this current budget, for 14 slots for this program. There's got to be some benefit difference to bringing somebody back versus the cost avoidance angle of enrolling someone currently in the district into the program. Do you see what I'm saying? I mean, you know, I'm all for bringing kids back in district, but that seems like it would also occupy slots that we are thinking of for kids who currently need services. And I guess a follow up to that would be, if we do have gangbuster success in bringing kids back, would it be possible to add another section of seven kids?
Right now, the intention of this proposal is, because there are students in district who we believe would be well-served in the Early Literacy Academy. However, that does not mean that we would not welcome somebody who is currently outplaced and wants to return, so.
Right, but then presumably, there would be a kid who was not enrolled in the ELA that otherwise would be. So we just, we have a scarce number of spots.
Yes, exactly. It's primarily intended for an in-district program, for students who are struggling in district.
So it's, to Mr. Peterson, you could be bringing back student B and then potentially having to outplace student A, depending on whether, who gets the spot?
Yes.
Mr. Cummings, I think Mr. Cummings, looks like he wants to say something.
Yes, I do, thank you. So as Mr. Peterson was speaking there, the question was occurring to me that, and if the board is interested, we could look at this and bring it back to you for next Tuesday, the idea of, what I heard Mr. Mancusi say was roughly, I think an average is about $50,000 for each of those students, 21 students a million dollars.
It's about, for the 21 students, yes.
Okay. So if we were to look at a program, if the board is interested, we could look at the idea of another, putting forth two literacy academy classrooms, early literacy academy classrooms, in a sense dedicating one to the prevention aspect and aiming to fill the other with students potentially coming back. Perhaps, you know, there's a couple ways to look at this. Students in upper elementary has transitioned back, they usually come back to middle school. There's a couple ways we could approach this, but just doing the math, seven positions, seven student positions at $50,000, each is $350,000, and I believe between teachers and two pairs, we're spending about $200,000 per class. So it's not a lot of money, but if the board is interested, one thing we'd have to look at, we'd have to look at the staffing, potentially the higher staff, and we'd also have to look at a different school for placement, because we'd be filling up McKinley. But we can do some work on that this week and have it back to you next week if the board is interested.
Mrs. Maxicinelli?
Yeah, so two, well, now three follow ups. The first being part of what I said, because I agree with Mr. Peterson's point, it'd be great if you have one back, and unfortunately, that takes a spot, so we just have another one leave. But of course, part of the basis of my question is the notion that we are supposed to be providing that PD to our regular staff and our special ed staff within buildings, so that we are hopefully being able to intercede sooner and prevent this, the need for this at all. Obviously, that's the dream, that that can happen, and that the student isn't coming out, and even here in Fairfield, basically being in kind of an outplacement situation in terms of leaving their home school. But, so that was part of the basis of my statement, was the notion that we're also serving all of the students who are beginning to have reading struggles take place. I did also, and to Mr. Cummings' point, on page five, I had submitted that question, it's the fat one on the page, concerning tuition. And just to Mr. Cummings' point, I would be very interested in hearing that, and again, in the spirit to Mrs. Rotelli's point of in budget, so this is all number driven, but I think we're all, and I'm sure Mr. Mancusi, it's tough to always be on the hot seat, where essentially, someone can be questioning the management of this whole situation, but it is kids and it is just what happens. And I'm sympathetic to that, but it is still a huge budget number, and the idea of really coming up with a more aggressive plan by disability, I mean, the one time we really put this out to staff, I don't know if Mrs. Gerber can remember, this was years ago, and Mrs. Leonardo came back and was talking about the therapeutic, yeah, day facility, and that was the only thing that was presented to the board, really, as an intervention. And what we're seeing is that there's a lot of other fine-tuned little academies that could possibly do this work, and wanting that big macro discussion of looking at these disabilities and how can we serve the students, because we do have the building space for it. And to be able to do that, I would just be very interested, and again, not by next Tuesday, although to your point, Mr. Cummings, that could possibly be by next Tuesday, and I would like to see that, but as part of a whole department discussion of the dream of pulling them back.
Yeah, I think if, at least for a week, it would be a matter of just running some of these numbers and likelihood, and just having a different conversation with Mr. Mancusi and his staff.
Your question was a great question, and it was shared with all our coordinators today.
Mr. Asa.
So I guess, when you come back to us after discussing this, two things that come to my mind, Mr. Cummings said, you know, wouldn't be able to place them in the same building, and that, to me, makes me wonder if that's an efficient use of this and sharing of staff. I would think that the collaboration and everything, you know, that will be considered by you, the professionals. The one thing I would want to know, though, is that to save $100,000, basically is what we'd be doing, based on the math that Mr. Cummings just mentioned, I would want to be darn sure that we're going to get seven kids back before I try to save $100,000 in a $200 million budget and then only be able to bring three back, because then we're spending more. So I like the sentiment, but I just, I say that, and I will be looking at that with a very refined magnifying glass to be sure, because I'm going to want some assurances if we go down this path, that we're going to fill those seats as designed.
Ms. Jacobson.
Unless somebody else has ELA questions, I just want to move on to the actual tuition number. Is that okay? I don't know who wants to answer this question, but can you just walk us through how you came up with your number here that you're putting in the budget? Understood. We all understand that this is a true up. It's an underfunded budget line item, causing other budget areas to have to address it. So for a number of years, it's not new. We're addressing a known issue. But I would like to know how you came up with this number.
The process that we came up with this year's projection? Yeah, with the coordinators, we looked at who's leaving, who's staying, and, you know, we made a projection on how many students we, you know, typically see determined in need of more restrictive placements on both or unilateral placements that we're dealing with, and that's how we came up with that projection. We did work with the business office very closely this year to try to refine, so that's pretty much the process that we used.
And we did offset with all of the appropriate revenues that are anticipated to come in as well. So it's reflective of anticipated excess cost, anticipated IDEA, anticipated OTT, you know, out-of-town tuition revenues. So all of those are also, it's net of those amounts that you see in the board budget.
Thank you, and I did ask a question, in case anyone didn't get to it, on the reduction in the excess cost reimbursement, and that came out to about $310,000, I believe that you said, based on using 70% versus a 73% reimbursement rate. Is that a number that the state has given you for next year?
No, we chose to go with 70% this year as this '22, '23, as a more conservative number.
Based on less this year?
Based on not knowing what we're going to be getting back.
And speaking with colleagues throughout the Fairfield County, as to how they're budgeting this year as well, we spoke to our colleagues, and they're all being relatively conservative this year with the percent reimbursement by the state.
So one thing that we could possibly be advocating for in this '22, '23 state budget is movement on the excess cost line item. That's been flat for a number of years. That would be helpful to us and I'm sure everyone else, so just, okay. All right, thank you very much.
Any other questions on tuition? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to other purchased services, pages 44 to 45 and the accompanying pages of backup. Mr. Peterson.
Thank you. It wouldn't be a budget season if I didn't ask a question about copy.
We were all waiting.
I asked a question about this in the spreadsheet, and Ms. Laborious, thank you for your answer. I guess the thing that I don't understand is, I'm pretty positive that it was represented to us in the last budget round by Ms. Munsel, that we were basing that budget, the current year budget, on actual usage. And what I'm seeing in this budget is that we have to make an additional investment in these card readers in order to get actual usage data. Do we have no data on actual usage?
No, oh, I apologize, Mr. Peterson, if that's the way I conveyed it. We shifted back to the enrollment-based allocations in order to see where individual departments were over or under what we would expect based on just a basic assumption. We have not yet invested in the card readers. We're proposing that, we believe that we'll see savings when we have this greater oversight to the budget, which holds people accountable to explain where they're over a per pupil, you know, enrollment amount. And those savings next year are not reflected in the budget. We are showing a minor savings in the budget. It's assuming just a 2.5% reduction. We think through this methodology, we'll see a greater reduction, which we've then proposed to bring back to the board and suggest as a budget transfer, so we can purchase the card readers and see further reductions in the next year, where we can set targets for schools. We just couldn't do it, we didn't think it was prudent to do it all at once until we had the data based on the enrollment and the usage.
All right, so you're saying that you may come to us in the course of the next school year, mid-school year, with, oh, okay.
A proposed transfer to invest. It's a nominal amount in the card readers, so that we can get that feedback data. We do have output per machine now, but this would enable us to, folks would use their ID badge and swipe in, so we could get more granular data about usage. Other districts do this, and then we could set targets based on that information.
Okay. All right, I'm going to hold off. I may have some other questions on this, but I can always reach out to you individually, too. Thank you.
Any other questions on this section? Mrs. Maxicinelli?
To Mr., well, I believe to Dr. Zavajanzik. I had asked the question, and I think it all makes sense, but on page five of Budget Detail by Object, I assume this is the time I should ask about professional development, because I'd asked about the increases in science and social studies, considering that they are, this is not their implementation years. So the answer is here, but I'm just trying to read it quickly, so I thought, while I have you up here, and it is the item, and you could speak more to it, I guess especially regarding the NGSS practice training, because that obviously comes with a higher price tag, the training for the new social studies course that we approved, which, again, those are just higher than, I would say, normal PD numbers.
I'm just looking for my answer. Those are all reflected in here, so I think it was $9,500 for the social study, the new, excuse me, the new social studies course, African-American and Latino Studies. The Science Department was going through NGSS inquiry training, which is new this year. I'm not sure which page you're on, so I don't want to miss, oh, here we go.
It's page five of the Budget Detail by Objects, so in the book, it's page 94. In the question page, it's- In the question page, it's, again, page five of the Budget Detail by Object.
I got it now, thank you. There is Implementation Guide adjustments also in Science for the current Biology Chemistry and the new Environmental Chemistry course as well. Those are new in the line items under the Professional Development for Science. We do sometimes put in, as you see there, Assured Experiences in the PD account. There's one for the Marine Science class. There was another one in K5 as well, for Audubon, that were significant in terms of the increase, based on the question. For Language Arts, you are accurate, the curriculum calendar has been updated since the budget book was printed. The main drivers in the increases there, which were a little over $100,000, were the inclusion of decodable text, K-1, which goes right in line with our structured literacy training. So, these are essentially books that kids, books that will show the actual phonics skills being taught in class over and over again, so there's repetition with them as well, versus a predictable text, which is more leveled in nature. There's also secondary ELA, including middle and high school texts, and I left out Classroom Libraries updates, looking through different lenses in the curriculum through DEI, increasing nonfiction text in Science and Social Studies as well for students in K-5 to use.
Okay, so, a few questions. Regarding the structured literacy, you have no, again, to echo Mrs. Jacobson's question, you have no concerns that whatever is happening at the state level would impact that selection?
No, not for decodable text. Those would match the units of study that the board had purchased in phonics, as a way for kids to practice the application skills within those units.
Okay. And the, because I know one thing that we've talked about is discussing the texts of middle school and high school, and the board is obviously going to be interested in that when we get to that curriculum, and yet, this is $41,000 in text, which could or could not face an issue of support. I have no idea, because obviously I have no idea what's being looked at. But can you speak any more to that? I assume this is a whole grade level, or whole teacher-level sets of texts. This isn't, obviously, the library.
That's accurate. So, it'd be listed as, for example, like a grade-six classroom, small group book sets. So, not necessarily a full classroom reading the same book, but classrooms reading different books among the same either genre or area that they're studying within their unit. That goes for the high school as well. I don't believe any were core, none of them are core novels at this point, within there, that would be, that would seek board approval, there are more instructional resources within them.
Okay, and then, the last one is about the new social studies course, because we already paid a decent amount of PD for that this past summer, and $9,500 is an extraordinary, an unusual amount for a single course. So, can you speak more to that?
It includes a tech set for each of the high schools, an additional tech set for each of the high schools. Remember, the state does provide one, as well as the CIRC training for, I believe it's six teachers, or four teachers and two administrators, but I would have to get the final number on that. I'm doing that from memory, without the budget in front of me.
So, once the course selection process is completed, it's possible that that would be an area for reduction if we don't train four teachers?
Yeah, if it's not needed, absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
Sorry to shift gears, but just going through the big spreadsheet here. Ms. Laborius, could you, I asked you about the $8,400, this is object 319 on page 92, the $8,400 for travel reimbursement for finance, which seems like it's pretty much always been there. What is that? Because in your answer, you say that is coded to finance, but belongs in maintenance and facilities, it does reflect the travel between buildings, but we have a separate line for travel reimbursement for maintenance, so I'm confused by your answer.
Yes, I think it's a historical holdover, where the business office centrally did travel, business office including maintenance of facilities, and some members of the finance team, perhaps they were going back and forth to the bank. It could have been maybe the director getting reimbursed for small amounts of travel amongst the district. That's no longer happening. This current budget just reflects the facility, the director, executive director of Facilities and Maintenance in that budget line, and I'm sorry, I apologize, I don't know his title, but the Safety and Construction, Mr. Papa George, I apologize, so Sal Morbitino, those two are reflected in the finance line. It's misleading in that that formerly encompassed the full business office, but it is for those two individuals.
Well, if that's the case, should we reduce that line?
That, we can review that again. That was the full budget request for this year. But we can review that again, certainly.
All right, it feels like what you're saying is, we used to do stuff, and we're not doing it anymore, but we're still budgeting for it.
We're budgeting based on the actuals, which were based on, I think what I'm trying to say is that the budget resides there as a historical legacy, because the business office was considered in one unit. It's named Finance, but Finance is not, Finance Department itself is not currently utilizing that travel. The budget reflects the actuals, which is just for those few individuals in the Facility and Maintenance Department that do travel throughout the course of their day.
All right. I also asked in this question, and I would look forward to this information, more information about who gets travel reimbursements and for what. If we can break this down further, this seems like a very nebulous area.
Sure, we'd be happy to.
That I would like some more clarity on.
Sure, sure, I'd be happy to, before the next budget meeting.
And I found, I'm sorry, another question that I, I'm sorry, because we had talked about the enrollment issues with copiers, and I knew that I had asked this. So, the copier budget at North Stratfield is going up by 33%, but even with our large increase in projected enrollment, that's only going up 14%. So, what, why the delta there?
Their last year was based on their actuals, so they probably were a lower use, usage school. I can verify that when I look at the two methodologies, but yet, last year's was based on usage, and this year is based on the enrollment assumption, going back to the previous methodology.
All right, so you're saying, okay, so you're saying that they shouldn't, the numbers are not going to track exactly what the enrollment changes, they're, because we're going back to the previous methodology.
Correct, correct.
And overlaying enrollment on that.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
The sooner we can get those card readers, the better, please.
I agree.
I mean, no, I'm, you know, look, I've asked for years for more detail on these numbers.
We can give you.
For years, and I'm not, this is not coming at you, because I know you're new here, but I really want to stress that areas of the budget where I think they are fuzzy and nebulous need to be brought into focus, and this is one of those areas. And the fact that it's taken four years to get to the point where we can even, you know, log individual copier usage is absurd. We're custodians of the town's money, and the more we spend on ridiculous things, and I'm not saying copying is ridiculous, but more that we, if we can't find efficiencies, even in these small areas, we don't have the money to do, we're talking about, you know, spending money on the, on the, earlier this, Literacy Academy. That would be a great use of money. I'm interested in finding areas in the budget where there's nebulousness that we can lock down, that may be areas of savings. So, I just, again, not at you, it's been four years of this, I think it's time. I think it's time.
Mr. Peterson, I hear your frustration. Mr. Cummings has tasked me with bringing this down, and, you know, I will share with you our assumptions for this budget, and what I'm planning for, and you can hold me accountable, and Superintendent Cummings accountable, or in future years. We agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Jacobson.
I just want to follow up, and, Mr. Peterson, I hear you, but I also just want to chime in to say that, not to the point where we're telling our teachers, like, not to support students in the manner in which they may feel best. So, just, you're not saying to do that, right?
No, I'm not at all saying.
I don't want our teachers to feel like, I'm going to get, you know, a test-ask if I print something for my kids that I think is needed, so.
No, just to clarify, I have no interest in that. If there is an educational need to copy, please go ahead and copy. I want to just know how many copies we're making, and how much it costs, and it shouldn't take years to figure out what that number is.
Any other questions on this section? Ms. Maxicanelli.
I actually needed to go back a section, because I, again, this is where I'll talk to Mrs. Vitale about my feelings about this Google Doc, which are very strong and pointed, but going back to the instructional resources, to Dr. Zavajanzik, I'm not familiar, I know the COGAT, and I know the NAGLIA, I've never heard of this other gifted assessment, and I was wondering if you could speak more to that, and how it's used, because I especially noted that you put talented in italics, so that's very eye-catching. But this is the Torrance assessment, if you could speak to that?
I don't have information on the actual assessment. It does, it does assess students in the talented area, so I think of the arts and so forth, versus the academic area, which is gifted, which is what we are, have been historically qualifying students who are in the gifted and talented policy, and in the programs. Knowing there is, there was, I should say, legislation for gifted and talented that's upcoming and, you know, due out by July for board policy, we wanted to make sure we accounted for that second piece of it, which is the talented area that we haven't been.
And so, like the gifted designation, there's nothing else that is mandated to come of us, aside from the identification. Is that correct?
That's accurate. We have to identify, but not necessarily service. I believe the board policy, though, without looking at it, does say there would be services for gifted.
Right, well, it's, we're getting there. Who, is everyone taking this? I don't mean to say that some people will know straight up that they're not going to pass any standard, but I think it's fair to say that we would know that.
So, the plan was to put it forth as we do the COGAT and NAGLIA, so the short answer is yes.
Everyone's taking it?
In a certain grade level, yes.
Sorry.
Again, I.
Just choose some of the kids, what they're going to produce.
I don't know much about the assessment. I know some of it is, it's artistic in nature. I haven't looked at it or taken it myself, but looking at different things, I've been able to produce different things. But I don't want to go too far down without not knowing the specific details of it.
Since we're on that track, Ms. Vitale, I don't know if you want to talk about the Math Challenge Resources 45-minute thing under Supplies, or do you want to wait until we are into, like, staff salaries and things, on a different night? I didn't know which bucket to put that conversation in.
Mr. Cummings, would you, based on the staff that's here, do you have a preference of discussing it tonight, or just putting that discussion off until next week?
If we put it off next Thursday, then we could have Mr. Wakeman here.
Okay. But, Ms. Jacobson, if you have any additional questions, just forward them along, knowing that Mr. Wakeman will be here next week.
You have a follow-up to what's in these documents? We should submit that?
Yes.
On the document, or just in an email?
Nope, on the document.
Mrs. Vitale, to that point, does it make sense to add a column, and again, you and I need a follow-up conversation, but a column designating where the topic was supposed to be addressed according to the agenda item number, so someone could say, oh, wait a minute, this was already supposed to have been covered Tuesday, and I have a follow-up versus this will be next Tuesday's agenda, I need to be ready for it then? Do you get what I'm saying?
Ms. Laborius is shaking her head.
For organizers, this, I've just proposed something really fun, but for non-organizers, this would not be fun.
We can add something that shows, you know, addressed, and then open item, and then you can check it off, if you'd like. We can take a stab at checking off if we feel as though it's been addressed, and you could just look it over and unclick. Does that make sense, or?
I mean, or color coding, I mean, I don't know.
Look, I don't overly care. I just recognize that the entire Google Doc has no symmetry to the agenda, and that's what I had tried to articulate last year, and had tried to articulate to Mr. Peterson. And I get your point, that nobody else was complaining, but now is when we're seeing that it's a problem.
Mrs. Maxicanelli, I'm not, I agree, in terms of feedback that I had given in Finance Committee was similar, in terms of trying to get the executive summary and the backup pages all in one place. I'm.
I mean, we could just leave the next Tuesday messy, and if we need to go back, we go back. I'm not trying to add work to staff, but.
No, no, I don't think that, you know, moving forward, I think we could probably, we have the information there, we probably could, you know, play around with it a little bit.
Can I urge a caution?
Yeah.
My caution on this would be, we, you got the document, you got the document tonight at 5:15. If we're going to be adding pieces to this, either we're going to have to move back the day we get the questions, or, I don't know what we're going to, I mean, the problem was, I'm not saying that the long-term goal is incorrect or anything, I'm just saying that, given the current constraints of what we're trying to do, and the timeline, and that's just my worry. So, I hear Ms. Laborius being very generous in adding the time, but my question is just knowing how busy we all were right now. So, if there's a solution that accommodates for that, we're for it, but I just, that's just, I wanted to say that. And if it's possible, perhaps, Ms. Laborius and I can talk further tomorrow, you, Ms. Vitale, you and I could talk with Ms. Laborius, and we can come up with something in the interim, if not that. I just, I don't want to make a commitment now that tomorrow morning, I've done this in my life too many times, made a commitment in the evening that I regretted in the morning, so I just want to be cautious.
Fair enough. What are we up to? Supplies Text and Materials, pages 46 to 47?
Yeah, I don't need an answer. My question had been about the math textbooks, but that's an answer that's found in the link, so I'll hold off until next week, if I have anything further with that.
This is just showing my ignorance of, what is a docking station, and what are we using it for?
So, a dock station is something that you connect your laptop to? We have the tech expert, I'll back down.
Let me just forget that. Nancy Burns, IT Director. A docking station is a device that allows the ports that you usually find, that you plug things into on a computer. It gives you the ability to take a laptop, plug just into the docking station, and then all those plugs for your printer, or a document camera, or any other peripherals that you may be using, are plugged into that docking station. So, you don't have to plug, unplug three or four things every time you pick your laptop up and walk out of the room.
Okay, and we're moving on to capital. Any questions, pages 52 to 53? Pages 52 to 53? Ms. Jacobson, sorry.
Hi, I'm going to ask a question about the sports equipment waterfall. And thank you for answering my question. I know that in September, when we had our presentation, I don't think the board received an updated waterfall from the last one that we had available to us because the answer indicated that some things that were on that were able to be purchased last year. So not for tonight, but my request is going to be in order to assess the situation properly, to have an updated waterfall from the updates. But if we could please, you know, track changes on those types of things with colors or whatever to see the variances. I think that the point for me on this is also through Policy Committee was that we worked really hard to create, ask staff to create these waterfalls in order to address a larger issue that we have. So I just want to make sure that I have all the information at my hand going into the budget vote and the importance to me that we are fully funding that waterfall and that we're not creating even more of a situation than we know that we already have. And then I did ask a follow-up question, which I know you weren't able to get to, but I was interested also in the uniform waterfall as well in this area, which is not in page one, in the support material or in this that we have. So that might be a follow-up as well. Thank you very much.
Mr. Peterson?
I'm looking at the Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three. I, I just noticed line 19, new renovation of concession building, second floor for football locker room. Haven't we already approved $125,000 for this? I'm pretty sure we did.
Yes, that was approved and it was reallocated not this year, the year, previous year due to the inability, inability to get the project done because of the delays in materials and manpower.
Well, where, where did that $125,000 go?
I would have to pull up, I believe it was put back into the general fund. I don't know where it actually ended up at the end of the day.
And why is the project now $200,000?
I would have to look at, we, oh, because we did do an increase based on material costs to date. It's, it's a project that I know is a sore subject for a bunch of people, but unfortunate.
I think everyone voted to get, voted for it, but me. I, I made a motion to remove it and I think it was defeated eight to one.
Yes.
Which I'm, I'm okay about, but like the fact that this is coming back to us.
It's, it's coming back as a number two project. We, we would still like to move forwards with it. We don't feel this is the right time to do that, however.
Ms. Jacobson had her hand up first.
So if you remember in the summer, we got updated summer project work sent to us. I recently asked you in your Friday packet, you got an update, update to that update. And basically that project that wasn't done in the summer, remember those funds were expended on other projects that were unbudgeted at that time, right? So, but to follow up on your question is that yes, it was funded. The money was expended on other projects. And I don't think we want to get into a big maintenance thing tonight, but one of the questions will be how do you discern a priority one to a priority two to a priority three? Because this was already funded, voted on, appropriated as a one, now it's a two. So I'm just confused how you change buckets and that issue, along with some other things that will air in that update that you got in the packet.
Mrs. Maxicanelli?
So one, thank you, Mrs. Jacobson. Now that you say that, that's familiar. I had not remembered that either. And it also therefore kind of brings to our attention that it is important that we look at the priority twos as well because sometimes over the course of the summer, something might get changed. And so it is worth a look, even though it's not what's in the budget request. And so is line 20 at Ludlow, the reconfiguring, is that the Webster? I don't know the Ludlow campus well enough to know this, but that $100,000, was that for the Webster that we cut last year? Which at that time had been $45,000 or $47,000?
I apologize. I don't have the sheet in front of me.
Again, that's line 20.
Yes, that is the Webster parking lot slash driveway area that you're referring to on line 20.
That in one year is now $53,000 more?
I don't think that the, the budget request for last year was the reconfiguration of the whole driveway.
Well, that, that's why I'm asking.
The addition of.
So.
The addition of just additional parking spots. Sorry.
Yes, it was, it was not a full project. This is, this was updated to include paving all the way back to the, for lack of a better term, the solar parking lot area, all the way out to the street with a reconfiguration of additional parking spots. This was the last, when we talked about it last, we were only going to be widening the area and adding some additional parking.
Just my last question, but so is this budget line 20, which of course we're not moving forward with, but who knows what's going to come up? Is the emphasis of this to gain parking? Or is the emphasis of this because we have asphalt or whatever the heck the material is at this point that's broken, ruptured, tree roots coming through? Which, what's the focus of number 20?
It actually is both of what you brought up. It's to gain parking spots at the beginning of the driveway and also to take care of the decaying driveway along the way there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I think this is just back when the back parking lots were done, some staff at Ludlow was questioning why we just didn't do the driveway into that back parking lot. So moving forward, I would just, Mr. Papa George, not doing it piecemeal. And I think that we talked about this a little bit, even when we toured Fairfield Woods Middle School and it didn't seem to make sense that, you know, this classroom was air-conditioned and the one right, the hallway right next to it wasn't. So, you know, trying to complete full projects at the same time rather than doing it piecemeal, I think is a smart approach in the long run in terms of saving money and also just, you know, properly maintaining our, our sites. All right, moving, any other questions on capital? I don't want to go too far down maintenance, being that that's going to be discussed next week.
Sorry, Ms. Vitale.
Yep.
One other question regarding, and I'm sorry, I did not think to bring the, the full waterfall with me tonight, so, and I'm sorry, I didn't think to submit this question. But when is the Osborne Hill renovation slated for? How many years out? Like distant, distant? Okay. All right. So the point being that to Mrs. Vitale's point, it doesn't make sense to hold on this project to wait for that as part of the larger renovation project, that this is more urgent than that, is my question.
The bathrooms?
Correct.
We can, well, can wait, because I have a similar, why don't you just answer the question really quickly right now, Mr. Papa George?
No, it does not, it would not hood us to wait for this project. And again, as I mentioned earlier in the spreadsheet with the questions, this is more of a cosmetic makeover that we're talking about. I could provide some additional pictures to what you have now. I, I actually have a bunch. I just didn't feel comfortable putting pictures of toilets in the budget book, so.
But the point is, this is not a space that down the road, when Osborne Hill finally gets the renovation, that doesn't get pushed off. This is not an area then that would, then be revisited and this pulled out? Because if it's just cosmetic, then I'm not sure why we're doing cosmetic operations. I would assume that this was something of a more substantive nature, that it was a priority one.
It's a substantive nature of the fact that it's, I don't want to say it's a hazardous condition, but it's going to create a hazardous condition if we don't take care of it now. We have divider walls that have rough spots on them, which are creating holes that children could get cut on if they play with them, that type of stuff. So we, we anticipate that if we ignore it any longer, it will become a hazard.
Okay. And thank you for calling them bank bathrooms now instead of the gang bathrooms, which somehow was just never the best word choice there. And I'm, the one thing I was surprised at, not that I'm advocating for adding anything, but that there's nothing in here regarding what's needed at Dwight. Is there, maybe I should just submit that question and come back to it or?
In terms of maintenance, let's, we're not discussing maintenance tonight, so I would wait until next week. We're just doing capital now.
Sorry, sorry, my apologies.
No, it's okay. Any other discussion on capital? All right. Seeing none? Yes, Mr. Peterson?
I received an answer to a question that I had put in about staff salaries and I was hoping to discuss that briefly now.
Yeah. Any, we can do some follow-up if anybody needs any follow-up right now on some of the questions that are submitted. Mr. Peterson?
On page 65, object 109, line 68. It's, it's on page five of the spreadsheet handout. It's, it's in the budget detail by object, page five. Apologies. Top of the page. Object 109, line 68. This was a question I had regarding detail in the budget book from the 2021 school year and actual expenditures. As I, as I wrote, this board appropriated $60,000 for the communications director position, but somehow we wound up spending $111,762. I asked about this discrepancy. The superintendent replied, "The communications director was asked to work overtime hours last year and this year due to concerns and communication needs created by the pandemic." So I have some specific questions about that response. Is, is the communications director position a salaried position? It is an hourly position? It is an hourly position. What alternatives were considered by the administration before spending an additional $50,000 in overtime?
We looked at the availability of other staff to do that work last year. Staff wasn't available to do that work last year. There was, given everything we went through with the different learning models. If you think back to the number of surveys we put out, if you think back to the reopening plan that had to be put together and then re-edited, and then the daily communications, the tracking we had to do around the number of positive cases, the reporting out that that required.
I, I appreciate all that. We received all of those.
I'm answering your question. That, that, those were things that nobody else had time to do in our office.
That wasn't the question that I asked you. The question I asked is what alternatives were considered? Did you, for example, consider freelancers or other contract employees?
No, we did not.
Why?
We had a person able to do that work and was in the unit and was available and was aware of all the requirements of the position.
Are you aware of the alternative costs of, of shopping some of this work out? Did you explore that at all?
No, I didn't.
Did you know that I have a multi-decade background in corporate communications?
I did, Mr. Peterson.
Did you ask me?
Peterson, I didn't.
You could have. You know, freelance work is readily available and went through a pandemic period where a lot of people were home and not doing their jobs. I know people in town right now who could have handled a lot of this work for much less money. And the fact that you didn't explore that whatsoever, I find extremely troubling. This is a huge chunk of money. And I, I don't, I don't know that you explored any alternatives. What you told me was that it was a lot of work and you had somebody and were just going to pay the person to do it.
That's correct.
This is a large amount of money, over and above what we budgeted for this position. And was there any point at which you informed members of this board about this extreme overage in this budget line item?
I made board members aware that we were asking almost a full-time, making this position almost full-time.
Did you inform board members that we were paying a $50,000 additional amount for this position?
No, I don't think I did.
I believe this was in our, I believe this was in our quarterly report when we looked at our quarterlies for this line item, though, that we did notice that there was an overage based on what was budgeted.
We, we did not notice there was a $50,000 overage in this.
I'm, I'm just noting that in terms of the overage in that salary line.
This is the first time that we have seen this number. This is the first time we have seen this number and it's been months and months since the end of 2021. You had ample opportunity to inform us of this large, large overage in this line and you opted not to. And I find that disturbing. I find it disturbing that this number got so big so fast that you didn't explore other alternatives and you didn't inform us. We were aware of all the communications that were going out. We were having the conversations at the time. This is the first time we saw this number, January 2022. And that is unacceptable.
Are there any other questions? All right, the spreadsheet will be open. You continue to, Mr. Peter, Mr. Cummings, when would you like board members to submit questions by?
We would want them by Sunday evening.
Ms. Jacobson?
Probably better.
Yep.
So we want to submit our follow-ups in a new column and any questions for the next sequence by Sunday night, right? So I just want to make sure we're clear on what we're doing for the follow-ups to the answers that are in tonight or if always discussed tonight. Make a column for follow-up from tonight and previously answered questions and then new questions for the next time we meet, correct?
Do you want to answer that? Do you want to?
My, because I agree that we need an organized space for having follow-up, but rather than a new column, because I like how this is spaced out and how we can read it, if we could number them this way, a follow-up question could say, in reference to question 73, in question, reference, that would be an alternative to adding another column. But we do need, I agree with Mrs. Jacobson, we do need a means to having a follow-up. So either a new column or if we can number them, because what we don't want to have to start doing is saying, "Mrs. Jacobson's question number five on the budget object by detail spreadsheet." That's, I, I think a not helpful system.
Well, I, I've recorded almost 20 questions this evening, all right, that I don't want anybody to go back necessarily and put in. So I don't, if we, I guess what I'm trying to be wary of is that we have three sheets of questions. So I don't know if we would go back to the original idea of just sending in questions or I create a second spreadsheet, just a Google Doc and you drop questions in it, but then you lose the reference back to the spreadsheet. So what we can do with this, what the board finds the easiest.
I mean, I like to look across and just have the continuity, you know, of a visual of this goes with this question, but however, it's functional for the people who have to answer the questions. Some of these are going to be documents because it's a little bit more analysis this time, but you tell us.
Ms. Laborius, do you have any thoughts on this in terms of ease for?
I wondered if we could number the questions like you were saying and then just have consistent numbering throughout the entire document, so it's not more than one page five. So if we're referring to page five, it's just one page five. And if we number the questions, if you have a follow-up question for the purpose of having that visual, but also having it hang together, could you insert a row and say if it's question one, then put question one A and we'll know that the A is a follow-up? Would that work?
Because then we've got 24 hours to figure it out.
Mr. Cummings and I can come up with a solution tonight if that's okay with everyone.
I happily give this to.
All right. So we will, we'll have a to-be continued on this, and we'll wait for just an email tomorrow in terms of, take a look at the spreadsheet, fresh eyes, and we'll wait for some guidance on that. Board members, write your, write your questions down next, on the, in the budget book, and you'll have to wait 24 hours to enter. All right, with that, can I have a motion to adjourn? Ms. Jacobson, second by Ms. Vitale, all in favor? Motion carries 9-0. Thank you, everybody.